Well, good evening. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'll call the Lakewood City Council meeting for this Monday, July 18, 2022 to order. Madam Clerk, if you can call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Bokey.
Here.
For Branstadter.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Moss.
Here.
And Mayor Whalen.
Present.
You have a quorum?
Thank you very much. Now please stand and join me in a moment of silence, followed by our pledge to our nation's flag. For our men and women serving overseas and here at home. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming on a beautiful Monday evening to join us for our council agenda tonight, which includes proclamations and presentations. And tonight we're going to have the American Rescue Plan Act sub-recipient presentations from the Clover Park School District, the Low Income Housing Institute, and Tacoma Pro Bono. And to lead us off in our presentation and review, we have our planning manager Tiffany Spear, who will please introduce our presenters and take it from there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, members of the council. So as the mayor just said, this is an opportunity to hear tonight from three different of the quote, "sub recipients," that's what they're called under ARPA, of Lakewood funding that the city council has approved over the past about eight or nine months. Just a reminder very quickly for anyone watching, the ARPA four categories where funds are allowed to be targeted are for health emergency and negative economic impacts, workers performing essential work, provision of government services, and necessary investments in water, sewer, and broadband. And all three of the presenters tonight are going to be in that first category, health emergency or negative economic impacts. Within those are again some additional subcategories, public health, more targeted negative economic impacts, public health, premium pay infrastructure, revenue replacement, and administrative costs. All of what you'll hear tonight again relates to negative economic impacts or public health. Last March, believe it or not, it's been that long, there was an initial policy position that was agreed to by the council that first of all, ARPA was to be used for one-time costs or for certain programs or pilot programs that were an exception to the general rule. Secondly, that the ARPA funds would be treated as general fund monies and therefore there are, some portion of the ARPA dollars were set aside for the Community Services Advisory Board recommendation back to you for human services operations and priorities. And then there was a robust public outreach effort that occurred last summer, if you'll recall, where the city collected back the opinions of business owners and nonprofits as well as residents about how ARPA dollars should be spent. And what you will hear from tonight are all presenters who receive funds under these three precepts. In all, the city council has obligated about half, a little over half of all of the funds that are available to the city. And we'll be hearing from those first three, Low Income Housing Institute, Tacoma Pro Bono, and the Clover Park School District. They are related. Their presentation this evening will be regarding youth mental health programs. You have already heard in December of last year, actually, communities and schools talking about the 2021 Warriors of Change program. And then just a few weeks ago, you had Betty Capastani from Pierce County's Economic Development Department talking about the BIPOC Business Accelerator. You have the three this evening, and then just so you're aware, later on this fall, you will be hearing from those other seven organizations further down that slide. Some of them are just ramping up their activities now, but others will have a year's worth of feedback to provide to you. So I will get out of the way now and turn it over. I'm not sure if we've got Clover Park School District folks. If not, we'll invite Sharon Lee up from, excuse me, the Low Impact Housing Institute.
Our Clover Park School District presenters, Grant Twiman and Joshua Chambers are joining us virtually.
Oh, pardon me. Let's have them go first, then if that's all right.
Thank you.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
We certainly can.
All right, awesome. Well, good evening, Mayor Whalen and city council and those attending in person and virtually. My name is Grant Twiman, and I'm the Director of Equity and Community Engagement with the Clover Park School District. Here co-presenting with me tonight is Mr. Josh Chambers, who's serving in a new role. It's been supported through this joint partnership with the City of Lakewood and the Clover Park School District. And this is an extension of one of many partnerships that we have with the city, which we appreciate you all for continuing to work with us on this journey. And this work is, that we're talking about tonight, is completely inspired by student voice and student feedback as they've been sharing with us the need for more support around youth wellness and youth mental health. My office, Equity and Community Engagement, is charged by the superintendent to facilitate various groups and opportunities to elevate and empower student voice. And one of those is the Superintendent Youth Advisory Coalition. We call it SIAC. It meets with the superintendent four or five times a year. It's five to 10 students from each high school engaged in direct dialogue with the superintendent about real issues happening throughout their classrooms in their schools. And so, mental health was for sure high on their list. And as a result, we were able to work with the city and create a position to focus on youth wellness and youth mental health. Josh Chambers has a history of working with students for 10-plus years here in the Pierce County area. And he's been working with students here in Lakewood in a number of ways. And one of the most significant has been a feedback platform to engage students specifically on wellness and mental health. And he has slides tonight, and I believe they're in your packet. We're not going to go through it at a presentation pace. We're going to abbreviate it and go pretty quickly for you all tonight. But happy to answer any questions or set up a time to come back in a different format. So I'll toss it to Josh for him to share his screen and go through an abbreviated side deck that you have right there with you. How's that sound, Mr. Mayor?
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, Josh?
Yes, thank you. All right, so like Grant said, I'm Josh Chambers. I am youth wellness specialist in partnership with the city and the district. So one thing that we wanted to do was, we wanted to hear what students had to say about mental health. And so, we went to the campuses during lunches, and we provided a quick survey that took them two and a half minutes to finish, consisted of 10 questions. And we gave them chips and candy bars as reward. Couple of the questions that we asked, just are they aware of the mental health resources? Have you utilized them? What type of resources would they use? And what topics would they like? And we got feedback from over 400 of our high school students. See, some of the biggest takeaways were, this question was, are they aware of the mental health resources available to them on campus? There were 69% of the students that answered say, yes, I am aware of all the research that we have on campus. And we followed that, like, if so, have you utilized any of them? And 77% said, I have not utilized them. These are some of the topics, like, all right, how likely are you to utilize these mental health resources? Again, trying to gauge what will students actually use? So individual therapy, group therapy, online tools, topic workshops, peer-to-peer support, means someone that they are in relationship with, whether that's a friend or a trusted adult or even family member, and also articles, books. And the most traditional form of therapy is more individual, right? And we had 40% of students say, I will not use individual therapy. 27% say they were neutral, and 33% say they were likely to use individual therapy. Came the group, 47% said, don't want anything to do with groups. 25% said they were neutral, and 28% said they were likely to use it. And the peer-to-peer support, only 34% said that they wouldn't use it. 22 were neutral, and 44% said they were likely to use it. So again, it shows us that students want help from people that they know and that they have really good relationships with. So also ask them questions about just topics, whereas anxiety, stress, depression, overall wellness, social media. And the top two responses were, students are feeling, 69% of students said they are experiencing anxiety, and 73% are saying that they are stressed. And the next highest total was 39%, and that was for depression. So our students are anxious and they are stressed and want to learn more about that than any other topic that we brought up. We, more student feedback, there were some things that wanted to go, like, okay, why are you stressed? Give us an idea. And stress from school workload, a lot of them saying they feel really disconnected from school and from friends because of COVID, they forgot how to interact with people, and they feel isolated. And then also just, hey, just global events, cultural affairs, and this personal actions. There's just a lot that they are taking in right now that's adding to their stress and anxiety. So ask them, hey, how would you like to learn about this? More individual, group workshops, online, or videos? Yeah, we're trying to get student voice. And this is some of the solutions that they came up with was, they want better understanding and support from the teachers. They would like electives or classes over mental health. They want more counselors and therapists. They really want built-in time during the class period to deal with their mental health. And they want education on healthy stress management. And they want more events to socialize and get back to being around each other and interacting with each other. Those were the main takeaways, whereas, hey, students are aware of the mental health resources. They need support when dealing with anxiety and stress. And they prefer to get help from someone that they have rapport or a relationship with when they need help.
Thanks, Josh. Mayor Whalen and city council, that pending any questions, that concludes our brief and our update. It's important to know, as Josh continued to support students throughout summer school, we began planning and strategizing focus groups with students come end of August, September, to begin implementing some of the suggestions that the district and school-wide would be able to implement to reduce stress and anxiety. So many layers, complex issue, but we're moving in the right direction in that we have data that we typically don't have from over 400 students. And those students are excited to continue working with us.
So let me just get that right. So your survey sample was over 400 students?
Yes, sir.
That's been quite good, because that's probably greater than the survey sample we had on the citywide survey recently. So thank you for doing that. I had a question just generally, and it may lead to some other questions folks have. So when I look at the results where it said 77% haven't utilized the services, a good, you know, vast majority know about that they exist, but they're not using them. So it kind of begs the question, is it a resource issue? Do we need to put more resources or do we need to redirect? It sounds like peer-to-peer counseling or peer-to-peer education about how to help one another might be a good use of existing resources. What do you think?
Yeah, it's one of the things that we for sure are kind of kicking around, like, okay, how do we, how do we support students supporting their peers, right? And how do we help parents and families support their students? Because the theme for sure has been students working with strangers, they're kind of, they kind of have an allergy to that, right? And so, how do we support the folks that are already in their circle, right? Or within their three feet in terms of sphere of influence? How do we equip them with information and tools to at least kind of help in the basics before you get into the more in-depth individual therapy? Which is the traditional way that we've thought through, here's where we need to allocate resources. We just need more one-on-one counselors. And so, we're rethinking that and still having those conversations.
Sure thought in terms of bringing in speakers or folks that might be able to assist students with the whole process of, you know, the maturation and the resilience gleaning that we all get as we get older, right? Because workload and those kinds of stresses are stresses that we all experience. And it's a matter of how we deal with them and gain the tools to deal with them, especially when at that level, they've got expectations to actually have a workload to meet the state's standards and obviously achieve graduation for their own benefit and the benefit of their families. So what's your thought about that?
Yeah, so one thing that we for sure have decided as a district is, like this, seeing this data, doesn't mean we reduce rigor, right? We maintain a classroom environment that challenges each and every student to strive and achieve academic excellence. So that remains a sustain. But you're exactly right. How do we, within our classrooms, incorporate space to teach students coping skills, right? And mental strength and resiliency, which even as adults, right? It's one of those things like, yeah, we've learned it before or we've developed it, you know, maybe naturally, but we still need those refreshers, right? In terms of mindfulness, right, and different skills. So, yeah, for sure, ongoing.
Very good. Well, I'm going to open up to other members of the panel here. Commissioner, Councilmember Bell, and then Councilmember Branstadter, and then Mr. Anderson. There was another commission meeting, so sorry about that. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. So thank you for the presentation. I had a question on how your outreach and your communication will be. Are you utilizing translations? How are you addressing the families whose parents don't speak English quite as well as the students do? Or maybe the students? I wondered if that was something that was a part of the plan.
Yeah, for sure. And you ask a good question, because when you're talking about, and Josh, for sure, jump in, but when you're talking about mental health as a topic and a concept across different cultures, ethnicities, and languages, you just add to the layers of complexity. Now, at the same time, that doesn't mean we don't do it. It just means we for sure have to partner. We have to take seriously this idea of being student-centered and even equity if we're going to do it in a way that's responsible and effective across language barriers, across ethnicities, and then even the generational gap, right? Because where we have students, right, who are a little bit more open to the conversations around mental health and wellness, in some cases, their parents or grandparents or family members, it may be a little bit more of a gap to close. So you bring up a good point, Councilmember Bell. Yeah, definitely something we're considering.
Mr. Branstadter, and then Mr. Anderson, and then I'll turn to Ms. Farmer and Mr. Bokey.
Yeah, well, thank you. I was wondering, as you go into the new year, and I sort of gathered from your report that there were services and resources available this past year, but that the survey is meant to inform the mix of services or the intensity of them going forward next year and beyond. What's the target that you would want trying to move the utilization percentage to? Because the utilization percentage was low compared to the rhetoric we've heard from young people about need.
For sure. Right, we saw right at the beginning, folks know about it, but they're not using it. So the resources that were available this past year will still be available for this current year because the counselors that we have allocated and the different opportunities for mental health services were still low margins, right? Like, we were still, we still didn't have enough resources, right? So more work. So one, sustain, two, add. The thing that the survey revealed to us is we kind of have to offer something different. And so, the work that Josh is doing, working with the principals at each of the high schools, is again incorporating student feedback to offer that different. And so, that's the plan going into this year. So utilization, do we want students using it more? Or do we want students equipped with the mental resiliency and strength to not need it? That's a, you know, we want both, right? Like, if you need it, we want you to use it, but we also want students more independent, right? And able to stay mentally strong and resilient and not need the services. So it's a combination of both. I think if I'm going to summarize it, we sustain what we did last year in terms of services available. There's a few things that we are adding, and then it goes without saying, with the partnership with the city and the ARPA funds, Josh gets to stay with us for another year and offer those new opportunities that students are actually asking for.
Okay, I guess that I would just say that in terms of assessing how effective ARPA funds are being invested to us, the getting to a higher target number of students that are both aware and utilize services, I think is important for us to use if we're, because it's one of the, it's at least a piece of data that is somewhat going off over there.
Yeah, no, that's a good point. We'll make a note of that. And be sure to see if we can capture updates around those particular numbers. Thank you.
Yeah, and I understand choosing a target is maybe a policy issue that someone needs to give Josh and yourself, so you know what you're supposed to work towards. With the idea then being of that along the way, if you need to make adjustments, you can do that. I guess, you know, the, some of the recommendations that you got from students that Josh outlined mirror some of the recommendations that were in a presentation that the city's youth council gave to the city council about doing that. So I think even though, you know, you're a much larger sample, it certainly seemed in line with what we've been hearing. Some of the recommendations, though, were not so much resources, but policy questions. The diminishing credit policy and some other things. And maybe that is not in your realm to deal with that, but is there some openness within the district to look at some of those policies that are contributors to stress and anxiety? And is that on a timeline to maybe adjust by the beginning of the school year?
Yeah, good question. Not everything. And you're right, it's not necessarily our office able to kind of dictate that. But one thing I can say is, we find administrative teams across the district as well as district office really leaning in to when we have feedback from students, right? Those quotes carry a lot of weight. So you see it kind of taking notes when we hear students start to talk. And so, for sure, a lot of openness, and we've seen adjustments. Just this past year, there was a situation, end of September, early October, we had students across the high schools and middle schools sharing. And again, they're not talking or, you know, kind of conspiring together, right? Like, these are individual listening sessions, and students are saying the same thing, you know, in each session around assignments being piled up all at one time, and it just adding to this overwhelming, you know, stress and anxiety. And again, we're not going to reduce rigor. And so, how do we stagger, you know, those assignments, right? So that they're not all culminating at the same time. And we saw a number of high school administrative teams take that to their department leaders, right? Throughout their schools to make those adjustments. Now, nothing happens overnight, right? We all know that. But for sure, seeing progress, right? Seeing folks respond well to what students are saying. And again, not able to do everything, right? And that's one of the things that we're really careful about when we are working with students, is we're not making promises that, one, this is going to change overnight, or two, that we can change it, right? But we can promise that your voice and your thoughts and your feedback will be heard, and we'll continue the conversation.
And I guess the last thing is just sort of an observation in the realm of cities and the county and local government regionally, that the term "mental health" has been viewed less favorably with a greater idea of trying to describe the need in terms of behavioral health. And I don't know if that's something that's happening in education, and I don't know if that, if the, if the reference to mental health resources is, impacts willingness to available, avail someone with resources than if they were described as behavioral health resources or vice versa. Just a thought as how semantics of it seem to be playing out in other realms. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. And thanks for what you're doing there. I have a question or kind of request for clarification regarding the survey. It's not surprising that anxiety and stress exist. But a couple of things that didn't show up on the survey, or at least they blew by me because of my speed of comprehension, that I expected to be there with respect to adolescents, or one, acceptance or being loved. You know, having the friends, relationship with the parents, all those kind of things, and the uncertainty of adolescence. The other one was, you know, where do I go from here? You know, you're in a cocoon of a family environment, going to school every day, and boom, you may be out on your own. And so, I didn't see those there. Was that because it's focused on the school environment or the way the questions were asked? Or they just not show up? And they were well down the chart as far as stressors and anxiety go.
Yeah, good question. Josh, for sure, chime in. One thing, if I understand what you're asking, we definitely crafted the survey to be more school-focused and to get a baseline in terms of data around youth mental health from a student perspective. Again, we do the small groups and the focus groups. I mean, you all shared the data from the youth council, but to get the sample size we were looking for, we, it was a pretty short survey. I think the average time was two and a half minutes for students to start and finish it. We didn't want to impact, you know, classroom time, right? And so, we did it during lunch. So it for sure focused on the school environment, if that's what you're asking.
I think that explains it. So, thank you.
Yeah, not a problem. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you both for being here. This has been very enlightening. There's been an uptick in private counseling services, particularly among teen girls. And this may play off of what Councilmember Anderson was mentioning. I know that some kids are lucky enough to have private insurance, and so they can take advantage of outside counseling services, and that And so they can take advantage of outside counseling services and that may be one of the reasons why um, the, the high schoolers are not taking advantage of, of school services, particularly girls. I don't know if you showed any gender differences in your survey data?
Yeah, we did. Um, Josh, I think we have more more folks identified as male.
Yes, um. It was. So, so this survey, the results were forty-eight percent were male respondents and thirty-nine percent were female. Um, nine point nine percent were non-binary and two point one preferred not to say. So these were from mostly male perspective.
Were you able to catch that?
Yes.
Okay. And then, yeah, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Um, I think the other piece around demographics, we had a pretty good spread in terms of race and ethnicity. It pretty much mirrored, um, the district makeup, uh, in terms of, uh, race and ethnicity.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy, Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, thank you guys for the report. I was just curious as to have you given any consideration as to how you are going to be able to get some of these students that need the service but will not step up? Are you able to connect with the parents to try to help them get through that or anything on those lines?
Josh, you want to take that one or?
I've noticed that teenagers don't like to be.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a, um, that's nuanced and difficult thing that we're trying to figure out. Um, because what we're noticing is that a lot of students are kind of suffering in silence. And part of, I think of, if we bring education to like parents and to friends, like being able to spot the signs of when someone is struggling so that, um, it's not just a teacher or, um, coming to him saying you need these services, but it's people that they love and that they know are able to spot out like, hey, we're recognizing these signs and kind of pushing students to that. Um, so the answer to your question is, we have thought about that. It's just trying to figure out how do we go about that when there are so many different layers to family and who is around, but then also the concept of what is mental health? Um, what does that mean culturally? What does that mean, um, demographically? What does that mean generationally? Um, so good question, but it's a difficult question that we're trying to think through.
Is there another term you could use as opposed to mental health that would be helpful?
We, we've been throwing around the word wellness, like youth wellness, um, and that one's a lot. It's a lot easier for folks to kind of get their mind around and it kind of speaks to more like holistic, you know, kind of, kind of health and, and wellness. We're not sure if it's sticking yet, but it's, uh, it's one of the, for, for the very point that you're, you're bringing up, Deputy Mayor Moss, um, we've also been using well, youth wellness as a, as a term.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. If there are no other questions, we just want to thank you for coming tonight and giving us, uh, very helpful information. And we look forward to working with you to bolster some metrics. We make sure that the funds are getting directed in the, in the way most, uh, appropriate and helpful to the students in need.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. And after the district, we, uh, we thank you for the partnership and, uh, looking forward to, uh, continuing the journey.
Very good. Nice to meet you, Josh.
You too, as well, Mayor.
All right. Take care. Thank you. So next, Ms. Spears.
The next present, presenters will be from Low Impact Housing Institute and, um, Low Income Housing Institute, excuse me. And they are the ones that partnered, uh, to purchase Comfort Inn last fall. Uh, if you recall, it was Lakewood and Tacoma and Pierce County. Lakewood provided a million dollars and then Tacoma and Pierce County provided five. And that, uh, institution started operating as an enhanced shelter in December of last year. So, Sharon?
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening. I'm Sharon Lee and I'm the Executive Director of Lehi or Low Income Housing Institute. And, um, I want to thank the council and thank you Mayor Wallen and City Manager Caulfield. Um, we had a wonderful experience working with, um, Tiffany Spear and your staff. Um, we had the wonderful opportunity to acquire the, um, comfort, the former Comfort Inn. And I think it was a historic moment that the city of Lakewood joined with the city of Tacoma um, and, um, Pierce County. And, you know, it was a regional effort that was very successful. And we're thrilled that you committed ARPA funds. Um, and you're also, um, not just helping with the capital portion, but also the operations. And we're very, very pleased that, um, we quickly opened. We renamed it Aspen Court because, you know, the moment we bought it, they had to take down the, take down the name, right? So, um, so we renamed it Aspen Court and, um, you're all welcome to come and tour the building. And we want to tell you the progress of, um, what has happened since we purchased it. So quickly, the Low Income Housing Institute, you'll see before you, um, we're a nonprofit housing organization and we have a volunteer board and we've been around for thirty years. And what we do is develop, own and manage affordable housing. So we have over three thousand um, affordable apartments throughout the region. And then, um, the, the middle slide is, um, the urban rest stop. We have two hygiene centers for homeless people, which means that we have free showers, laundry, restrooms. And of course, um, we have visiting nurses and we have assistants. Um, but it is a very well-run hygiene facility. It's when people take a shower, it gets cleaned, um, for the next guest. And, um, we've had great success keeping people, um, safe and clean and healthy. Um, as you know, many shelters don't have adequate showers or, um, laundry facilities. So, and then because of our frustration around the, um, growing homeless population, we started tiny house villages. And we now have seventeen tiny house villages. Um, and those are, um, heated. Um, you can lock the door, they're insulated, and we have case managers on site moving people into permanent housing. So I just want to show you, um, some of our housing. This is in Milton and it's, um, housing for, um, families with children. And we have some previous homeless families living here as well. And then we own, um, Rainier View, which is in downtown Puyallup, and that's section eight housing for um, low-income seniors sixty-two and over. So we've been sort of, um, you know, invested in, um, Pierce County for many years. And then most recently with the, um, First Christian Church of Tacoma, we um, have a partnership with the church on church property, which is a tiny house village that sticks in Orchard. And it's, and it's a wonderful example of, um, we have volunteers and students and rotary clubs and, and, um, technical colleges, volunteers building the tiny houses. And then we, um, hook up all the, um, heating, electrical, and then we have plum toilets and showers and kitchens. And even the kitchens have, um, refrigerators, freezers, cooktops. And it's, um, couldn't have happened soon enough because when COVID hit, people living in tiny houses were really, really safe. All this fresh air, you're not sleeping next to someone, you're not coughing on someone. Um, people aren't stealing each other's belongings because you have your own tiny house. So, um, we had very few people who, very few staff and very few, um, um, people living in tiny houses who came down with COVID, unlike some of the other shelters, the congregate shelters. Um, this is one of our new buildings we're working on constructing in partnership with, um, Pierce County and the, um, city of Tacoma and then seventy-five units for seniors in the Lincoln District. And we have a partnership with Asian Pacific Cultural Center. And then this is, um, Aspen Court. And, um, we specifically chose this site because it had very large hotel rooms. And they each had, um, you know, refrigerator, microwave, private bath. Also, um, you know, the it, it had a, you know, air handling that goes directly outside in terms of COVID. So there wasn't like air circulating from inside. So we're very, very pleased that we were able to purchase this. And, um, I wanted, um, John Brown, who is our program manager, to describe the operations and give you some numbers and some reflection on the people we're, we are serving. So just so you know, um, we are serving, so far we served a hundred forty-six homeless people, including, um, eighteen people from Lakewood.
How's everybody doing? Um, so my name is John Brown. I'm the program manager for Lehi. So I oversee all of our tiny house villages in our shelters, all the way from Tukwila to Olympia. Uh, so for the operations, uh, at Aspen Court, uh, we have one VOM, which is the Village Operations Manager, which oversees the site. Uh, then underneath him, uh, we also have an assistant VOM. And then, uh, we have organizers, which what they do is, um, they help with making sure that the, uh, the Aspen Court is running functionally. Uh, making sure that if any of our clients need anything, they can assist them and making sure that, um, they're following the code of conduct, which is the do's and don'ts of being at Aspen Court. Uh, within that, we do have a twenty-four seven staff. So there's always, uh, two people on site at all times. And then also we have case managers. Uh, at this time, we have three case managers, uh, to help with the clientele that we have to move them into permanent housing. Uh, with that, we have one, uh, designated case manager that is specifically for behavioral health as well. So that's the staffing structure. And then also we do have one maintenance, uh, tech that's there to help with anything that comes uh, wrong in the building. And the good thing about that is we're able to absorb the individual that was there at, uh, from Comfort Inn, from us turning over. So he's knows the ins and outs of the building, which really does help for the longevity of the building. So that's, uh, our current operation staff. And then, uh, next, again, uh, at our grand opening there, um, and, uh, I will go to our next slide, which is referrals. So we have the Hill Team, uh, formerly known as the Hot Team, also Lakewood Police Department, uh, Urban League, CCS, Tacoma Rescue Mission, uh, Next Chapter, Recovery Cafe, Greater Lakes, and also other agencies as well. And then, uh, the guests, our current, uh, population right now is a hundred and five. And as Sharon's, uh, said, also, we've served a hundred and forty-six. And then also I know that we had questions here, uh, that came from Lakewood. So I'm just going to read those questions off and also answer them while I'm up here as well. If that's okay. Uh, so the first one is, what is the scope of your project? Has it changed since Lakewood approved funding? Our main focus is to help individuals who are currently experiencing homelessness, uh, transition into permanent housing. No, our focus is still on making sure we are getting individuals who are currently homeless directly into the shelter. Uh, the next question was, how does your project benefit? How many Lakewood people have you helped so far? Individuals who are currently unsheltered in the, in the elements, the largest number of those we serve are from illegal encampments, removals and sweeps. The individual rooms, uh, who, with personal bathrooms and showers are an added benefit to help those, uh, to help the spread, non-spread of COVID. Uh, and then also how many individuals that we have served is eighteen from Lakewood, four, four who are currently employed and three currently receiving SSI. And then, uh, how far along are you in the project? We opened in December twenty twenty-one and have the opportunity to serve over a hundred and forty individuals with eighteen individuals transitioning into permanent housing. Uh, with our current population, eight individuals are working through temp agencies and twenty-six are currently working full or part-time. We have had many successful programs in the meeting room as well. And because of the size of Aspen Court, um, we're able to help a lot of the individuals that are, are experiencing homelessness. And at the same time, we do have a meeting room. Uh, we've had other resources come out as far as Vallejo, uh, to give resume classes, interview classes. And at the same time, we had a program there that we had about twenty-six individuals graduate. And within that graduation time, uh, eight of them were able to actually get a jobs that will actually pay them well enough that they can move out into their own, um, into their own homes, which was really good. Um, uh, and it says here, the last question was any lessons learned today that would, um, that we'd like to inform, uh, the remainder of the project? Um, we haven't really, um, well, every time we open, uh, a new facility, we learn a lot. I think the biggest thing from uh, opening of this one is that the individuals that we are absorbing for them to kind of understand how, uh, Aspen Court runs. And again, that's just us. Um, passing on the information to who's, uh, being, being our referrals to let them know the do's, the don'ts that, you know, um, they have to meet with case management. You know, this is a place that we really, uh, want to have that accountability aspect to move forward in a permanent house. And then, uh, these are just some of the comments from some of the guests. Uh, one was, this program has helped me to stay on track. Thank you so much. Um, this is, this place has given me hope and a peace of mind. It has given me access to better resources to help me put homelessness behind me and get my own place. And again, Aspen Court has really just been a stepping stone for individuals that have been experiencing homelessness to give them a place that they can get resources. And again, the main goal is to move them into permanent housing. And then I will hand it back over to Sharon to talk about funders.
So on the left is the ribbon cutting, um, in the middle of winter. And we had, um, Pierce County Councilmember Janie Hitchens. And then the, um, Tacoma Mayor Woodards, and then Pierce County Councilmember Ryan Mello. And of course, the, um, County Executive, um, Bruce Dymar, and then City of Tacoma Councilmember Christina Walker. So, um, we really, really are grateful that there's a consortium of funders in this case. Um, and, um, we really appreciate the support the city of Lakewood has given us to make this possible. Um, we were able to also leverage state rapid acquisition funds, um, for the project as well. We were initially turned down for funding, um, and then had to reapply. Um, and we could not wait, um, because, um, the the county and the city had signed, uh, an agreement that they were going to end unsheltered homelessness by November. So, um, we were asked to quickly, um, set up some tiny house villages and purchase a, um, hotel for this purpose. And of course, November has, you know, come and gone, but, um, I think we are very, very much wanting to work with you as well as the county and, um, other local, um, you know, cities to transition more people out of, um, homelessness into, um, housing. So what I would like to do is say that, um, we have one more slide. So right now, just as a sort of, um, you know, letting you know about what we're doing, um, the, the state right now has a right-of-way program. I think, um, the governor and the state legislature decided that there were too many people sleeping on, um, state right-of-way. And, you know, um, Wash Dot land. And so there's funding specifically for Pierce County to address people sleeping outside and to bring them in as quickly as possible. So we are working with the city of Tacoma and Pierce County on a right-of-way proposal. And one concept is to purchase a brand-new, um, building. Um, and then you can also see on the other side is, um, Governor Inslee and, and his wife Trudy, the First Lady. They've, um, toured, um, three of our tiny house villages and they're very, very supportive of, um, tiny houses as a possibility. But tiny houses are only an interim step. Um, it's sort of like, um, you can get people immediately, chronically homeless people and, um, short-term and long-term homeless people into a tiny house village. Make sure that they're safe, that they're not, um, you know, um, they're safe from violence, they're safe from exposure. Um, but we need throughput, just like at the hotel. We need permanent housing so that people can move out of tiny houses, out of the hotel into permanent housing. So we look forward to working with you on, um, additional opportunities for partnership as well as for permanent housing.
Well, thank you very much. I know we probably have several questions. Uh, I'll start with a couple. It sounds like the program is working pretty well, uh, and there have been certainly Lakewood residents served by the facility there, Aspen Court. What happens in twenty twenty-three when the transition goes to permanent supportive housing? What are we going to do for the emergent, uh, housing that we are currently serving?
I'm sorry, the people who are currently in the hotel?
Well, the, the need for emergency housing, which is what Aspen Court is currently serving, as I understand it.
Right.
So what happens when we transition or you folks transition to permanent supportive housing in twenty twenty-three?
Well, um, we've done that in the past where we've taken a, um, hotel and then we've moved people into permanent housing and then, um, but we, we will renovate, the idea is to renovate, um, Aspen Court and to add kitchenettes and create permanent housing. So the question is, um, what else would be around? Right now, we have three, um, tiny house villages in the, in Tacoma. Um, there's a proposal to add a few more tiny house villages. Um, and, um, you know, we would like to And, you know, we would like to look at purchasing additional hotels. The reason why hotels are so, I guess, like a priority is because you're not displacing anybody. If we were purchasing an existing building, apartment building, that would be a problem. But we're looking right now at an opportunity for purchasing another hotel and using that as an enhanced shelter as well. So we've talked to city manager Cole Field and Tiffany about a potential hotel that's in Lakewood.
Okay.
And we're happy to give you more information about that hotel. So we think that there is a need for a replacement for Aspen Court. And I know that, I think there's been some recent numbers on the number of homeless people from Lakewood. I think, you know, the staff may want to share those numbers with you. But there's people right now who are homeless that cannot find shelter in Lakewood because you don't have a facility. So they're staying in other locations. And then there's also unhoused people in Lakewood, unsheltered homeless people in Lakewood that need a place.
Right. That's why we have enjoyed having Aspen Court as a resource, right? How many of the permanent supportive units would be dedicated to Lakewood folks, given the city's investment, when it transitions in twenty twenty three?
I don't know. I have to talk to Tiffany right now, but we, you know, you made an initial capital investment. And, and so far, it's been proportional to your investment. And the idea is that we would need additional funds for renovation once we convert. We have to build in, we'll probably have to, you know, upgrade the electrical and add kitchenettes to the hotel rooms to make it permanent supportive housing.
So hopefully, there will be a number proportional units available commensurate with the capital contribution we've made and whatever future contribution we may make.
Right.
I know Ms. Spear is leaning forward to address the question perhaps.
Go ahead. Thank you, Sharon. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When Lakewood provided the million dollars to this purchase of the structure, it was strictly for the purchase. And then there was the two years of emergency operations. There was no intent for any additional services to be provided there. So it is up to the council to make that decision as to what happens next.
But I guess the question, Ms. Spear, was, when it transitions over, do we retain the same commensurate number of units as it goes into permanent supportive housing or not?
That's what I meant, is that the million dollars was strictly for the construction and then the period of time when it was an emergency shelter.
For two years?
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Anderson?
Miss Lee, I have a couple of questions for you. Tell me a little bit about how you attribute people to a particular locality when they come in. And I'm not critical of the way you do it. I'm critical of D S H S. They have been less transparent with us for decades. And we don't know whether somebody who needs help in Lakewood is, has been a, really been a Lakewood resident, or if there's someone who is a D S H S ward of some type, and there is more than one type, who is released here without assistance. So what, what do you ask the people and how deep do you dig as far as where these folks are from?
So to answer your question, sir, the way that we set up Aspen Court is that we are getting our referrals directly from Lakewood. So what that entails is that the individuals are from Lakewood and then the Lakewood police are going out in the Lakewood community, make sure they're from Lakewood, and then giving us that referral. And that way, it keeps us, not the gatekeepers to say, making sure that, you know, we're having individuals that are coming to us from Lakewood from a Lakewood referral. So that's how we work that.
Yeah, actually, what I'm asking is if there's any way we know, we we can get additional information to address a different problem, but not the immediate housingless folks. Another question I have is probably a simple question with a difficult answer, a complex answer. I have heard report directly from someone who witnessed a fire among homeless encampment of some type tents in your proximity, and I know there's some issues down there. So we try to incentivize people to come in from the cove by providing them with shelter and services. Do you have any suggestions for coercive measures to bring people in? Because obviously, incentivism alone don't work if you have people burning down tents in your proximity of a facility such as yours.
Well, I think you've answered a, or you've asked a very good question. And this is what I would say. Oftentimes, especially during COVID, if the outreach workers offer somebody who has been camping out or sleeping out for a really long time a bed in a congregate shelter or a mat on the floor or a place like a dormitory, they will not accept that referral. However, we know that eighty to ninety percent of the people who we offer a tiny house to or Aspen Court will take it because they don't have to share that space. When you're in a tiny house, you don't have to share it with someone else. You don't have to worry about your items getting stolen. You don't have to worry about, you know, sleeping next to someone, catching some disease. There's also lice, there's TB, there's fleas, there's all sorts of issues with living close, packed with other people, strangers that you don't know. So in Aspen Court, everybody has their own room and of course, a private bath. And there's also a meal program. And so they've been practicing social distancing during COVID, and it's worked really well. And in a tiny house, same thing. So I will tell you this. When the city, when a major city decides to post as like a seventy two hour, we're gonna sweep, right? We're gonna sweep this location. We're gonna disband this illegal encampment. And homeless people hear about it, other people hear about it. They may come because they want to be offered a tiny house. So people are dying to have a tiny house or dying to get into Aspen Court because they don't want to stay outside. So just by hearing about a tiny house or a tiny house village where it's safe, where you have case management, where you have showers, where you have laundry, you have heat in your tiny house, you can bring your dog, you can bring your partner, bring in your belongings. It's made a huge difference in terms of what people want. So what we find is that people offered a, let's say, offered a congregate shelter, oftentimes, they'll move to another location, like, you know, a few blocks away, or they'll come back. That's why you continue to see people sleeping out at the same locations, even though it's been like so-called cleaned up, right? And then people are back there. So there are solutions that are very, you know, it's not like we have to beat them on the head to incentivize them to come in. People actually want to come in. So many people are actually tired of living outdoors.
What's your graduation rate?
Oh.
San Francisco Examiner, not exactly a conservative publication, just a very large exposé on the hotel rental program there. And there are more people exit the program by dying than any other reason.
I'm sorry, more people what?
Exit the program by dying than any other reason.
Yeah.
Warehoused in hotels that are thousands of rooms, literally leased by the city of San Francisco. But the people don't move on.
Yeah, this is a totally different situation. Our tiny house village program, over sixty five percent of the people stay three to six months. It's a, it's a bridge. It's a bridge to permanent housing. And about fifty eight percent of the people who exit, we are able to move into permanent housing. So we have a very high exit rate because we have a case manager onsite. In this case, Aspen Court has three case managers. And so we're not like having to locate people on the street or locate them in a shelter someplace. Our case managers work with them, know where to find them, help them with their I D., help them with housing navigation, help them with employment services.
So, so your tiny houses are run as a transitional housing rather than permanent supportive housing?
Yeah, they're run as a bridge, like a bridge enhanced shelter, bridge housing. Yeah, the tiny houses are not seen as permanent. They're seen as a bridge to permanent housing.
But Aspen Court's contemplated it'll be permanent supportive housing of some type?
Aspen Court right now is a enhanced shelter, bridge housing, and then it'll be transformed into permanent supportive housing later.
And what's your, what's your source of operational funding gonna be? Section A, F A S H vouchers or?
Well, right now, we're receiving money from the City of Lakewood and the City of Tacoma for operations. And then when it becomes permanent supportive housing, we expect that the tenants will then pay rent. So there's rental support. Some of them will have section eight. And some of them will get operating subsidies from the state. The state has a O M S, Operating Maintenance Support Services package that funds permanent supportive housing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Brandon, sir, do you have a question?
Name is Mayor. In your, early in your presentation, when you talked about the different services that you provided, there was a, talking about urban rest stops of where people who weren't residents, but they could come and avail themselves of, I think it said laundry and showers and pick up certain types of things. What attributes of an urban rest stop exist at Aspen Court?
I'm sorry, what aspects of it exist?
Right, right. At Aspen Court, what is available to a walk-in homeless person not looking to resign there, but is looking for some help?
So what we can do is, at the, at the main desk, sir, we do have a sheet of resources in the area. But as far as individuals that we have not been referred in, we, you know, if they have to use the restroom, we do have a restroom there they can use. But other than that, and given the resources, but really, it's, Aspen Court is just built for the clients that we have and the referrals that we have.
So a person can't self-refer them?
No, no.
Okay. In your presentation, you talked about that when someone was referred, there's a, an interview process to determine, to determine what?
So, so when we have our, so for example, the City of Lakewood, we'll get the referrals from the Lakewood police. They would give us the referral, the referral would come to Aspen Court. We would sit there, kind of just have a conversation of, you know, what are your, what are your goals? Take them on a tour, kind of explain how Aspen Court works as far as the code of conduct, the do's and don'ts, and off that conversation and having that, that interview with them, it would kind of take the next steps forward. And sometimes we've had individuals say, hey, you know, this really worked for me, or hey, I don't like that, you know, I have to meet with case management, or I don't like that I have a weekly chore that's really not for me, and I'd rather just be somewhere else. We've had incidents that that has happened. But we've had a lot more incidents that individuals have seen that, hey, you, you know, you have your own room here, you get a meal, you have to meet with case management, we have a system here that really works, what are some goals? And then from that, they get to meet with case management, and case management comes up with a plan detailed to them. Some may need socials, some may need licenses, some may need help on their resumes, some may want to go back to school. So what the case manager does is come up with a plan specifically for them. So that's.
So essentially, someone comes to get an understanding of Aspen Court and its operational rules and participation, and they can decide that that's not for them?
Yes.
Under what circumstances would a person who wants to stay, would you say you're not right?
Well, again, if we're, again, if we're, referral brings to us someone that has a S O on their record or sexual offense, we cannot take any S Os. So that's been the biggest thing, that we cannot take anybody that has any sexual offenses on their records.
Yeah. And I noted in the presentation that you were successful in getting some state rapid acquisition program funds to do that. And in the agreement between the city and Lehigh, there was a provision that if you were to get those funds, that those funds would be used proportionately to reimburse Tacoma, Pierce County, and Lakewood for some of the ARPA funds that we put in at the front. What's the timeline for that reimbursement? Is that represents money that we can reinvent in homelessness?
Yes, we are in the process of drawing those funds. And then we are, we are returning a portion of the funds back to the City of Lakewood. And we're hoping to draw those funds end of this month or early next month.
So it would be, refunds would be returned to us this year?
Yes, absolutely. Yes.
Okay, well, that means they'd be available for us in our next budget cycle. And that's, that's significant to me, to be able to go, go and go and do that. And then I had one other question about, there was a slide that talked about the number of people served on the duplicator to be able to go and do that and showed eighteen people from Lakewood, fourteen currently there. But on the far right of that slide, there was a column that had the heading housed. It had very few numbers in it.
Yes.
What is, what does that column mean?
You know, the clientele that we're dealing with, sir, again, is individuals that are coming directly off the street. So, you know, we haven't had as many positive movers as we would like. But again, we're dealing with individuals that are kind of coming with no type of identification. And again, during COVID, it's been kind of hard to obtain socials, to get licenses. And again, these are all the steps that we need for an individual to get a job, to get into housing. So again, you know, when we're having individuals come directly off the street, it's been taking a little bit longer. But again, having the type of case managers that we are having, we are definitely making progress and making steps in the right direction. Versus if we had an individual that came to us with their license, with their social, the movement can be a lot more faster. But again, having individuals that are coming directly off the streets has been a little bit of a slow process to get those items.
So do I understand that that, that column meant that a person was there and then moved on to some permanent housing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boki.
Just a couple of questions, and one's just a statistical question. What's, what's the average age of the person who's going into Aspen Court approximately? I'm not gonna hold you to an exact number.
Probably the average age, sir, would be late, maybe late thirties, early forties is the age. It's kind of that age.
And what's the oldest individual you've probably had going there?
We've had individuals in their sixties, sir.
In their sixties. So I want to talk about case managers because you throw that term out and we nod, act like we know. And, and then you mentioned there's someone specifically for mental health. Explain to us the, the regular case managers, not the mental health case managers. But it sounds like they're jack of all trades. They do a lot of things. But kind of explain to me what a day for a case manager would be like, who are they contacting? And then when you move from this enhanced shelter idea to permanent supportive, how does case management change?
So a day of a case manager, when each case manager has a certain amount of clients that they are over. So that way, you will always see the same case manager. And we do this so they can really build that rapport and build that relationship. So from that, again, seeing what they need as far as, you know, if they need their birth certificate, if they need their license, also asking those, those conversations of, do you have a resume? When is the last time you've had, what kind of skills do you have? And then really just coming up with a plan for that individual. Because we, the main goal for all of our individuals is to give them a safe and healthy environment. And then that next piece to the, is for all of them to attain permanent housing. So in between that time is that the case manager is focused on, you know, how is your healthcare doing, right? Because we all know if, if you're not a healthy person, then you, it's gonna be hard for you to go obtain that job. So that's like the, one of the main focuses that we're focusing on is their, their health mentally and physically. And then with that, how can we now get you a job that you can work or do? Or then again, we may have an individual that says, hey, you know, I'm on S S I, I'm on S D I. So then we know, okay, if this individual has funding, then we have to find how can we get you into permanent housing? What, what can you pay? So it's really, as a case manager, is coming up with a plan that is detailed to that individual and really what the case manager is. And really what the case manager is doing is really getting those fine details of what we need to do to move you into permanent housing. But at the same time, what barriers may you have that we can help you overcome? You know, we've had certain individuals that say, hey, I have a, I'm, I'm trying to, you know, get better healthcare. Okay, so let's, let's see about getting you some healthcare. Some individuals say, you know, I have a, a car that, that may need a little help. Maybe we can get another resource that can see, have someone come check your car. So it's really just finding those fundamentals of how we can, at the same time, focus on our clients, their physical, their mental health, and then also move them into permanent housing. But at the same time, seeing where the loopholes are. Like what is being your barrier? What can we do to move you into permanent housing? Because at the end of the day, the clientele that we are, have, they all are usually missing something that they just need a little help on. And that case manager kind of fills that void. That's the gist of a case manager in a.
And, and does that change when you move to the permanent supportive housing model? Or is it basically the same?
So if we have an individual that moves now, do you mean if they move into permanent housing? Or do you mean?
And when you transition from the enhanced, what do you call it, enhanced? To the permanent supportive and it becomes the new?
Right. Well, I think the case manager that's in Aspen Court or Tiny House Village, their number one goal is to give them support for them to have a successful exit to permanent housing. Or in some cases reunite with family or friends. So just so you know, we have purchased train tickets, plane tickets, bus fare. If the final destination with family or friends means that they're no longer homeless. So we've done that. But once you're in permanent supportive housing, the issue is stabilizing you in permanent supportive housing. People can't just like, give them a, you know, wonderful apartment and hope that they'll thrive on their own. People are still addressing, in some cases, medical issues, mental health, drug, alcohol, you know, other issues. And so they actually need support to remain stably housed. You know, and so we actually provide help with first month's rent, security deposit, moving expense, furniture. We try to make it, make it a successful transition to permanent housing. So it's a different goal, which is to, you know, make sure that they're stable and that, and that they can maintain their housing. And in some cases, that means income support. It may mean, you know, helping people with food stamps. With, you know, we have, we actually house a lot of veterans, making sure that they're connected with the VA. We have, we also have, well, families is a little different. But, you know, we also have, we have also permanent supportive housing for homeless families, permanent supportive housing for homeless veterans, seniors. We also have permanent supportive housing for young adults who are homeless. Yeah, so it's, it's a whole range.
Well, thank you for that. When you mention healthcare, I assume you're trying to get folks into Medicaid? And then are there issues with, are there dental issues a lot of times included in that? And are you able to access? I know there's always a, there's kind of this, because of low reimbursement rates, there's like this permanent shortage of dental care for Medicaid.
No, absolutely.
Are you able to access that?
We use a lot of the community clinics. We've been, we partner, well, for behavioral health and in some cases for other healthcare, we partner with C Mar. You know, we, we partner with therapeutic health services and the local, you know, hospitals and clinics. Absolutely. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? If not, thank you very much for your support and your work on behalf of the many unhoused individuals who need services and for helping those in Lakewood find them with the Enhanced Shelter in Aspen Court. We appreciate your work and thank you for the update.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it. So our, I'm sorry, our final presentation tonight, Mr. Mayor, will be virtual and it will be from Tacoma Probono. And I know that there are one, if not two, people here online from T P B. And if you're not aware, what has happened over the last year or so is that, or excuse me, eight months, is we've had Tacoma Probono actually here in the city hall every Thursday, providing services to people who aren't able to travel to downtown Tacoma where their main offices are. So Lakewood has become a satellite office for Tacoma Probono. But the funding that was provided was to specifically assist those coming up against eviction here in the city of Lakewood. So with that, I'll turn it over to Carly Roberts.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me tonight virtually. I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk about our program. It's not often that I get a chance to brag about the great work that our staff are doing. So I'm excited to have the opportunity to do that tonight. So what our program does is provide free legal services to low-income residents of Lakewood. Our broader Housing Justice Project provides services for all of Pierce County. And with your generous funding, we're able to really focus a portion of that on Lakewood. As Ms. Spear said, we have attorneys and paralegals every Thursday present in Lakewood City Hall. And we have clients meet us for appointments and we also hold walk-in hours. So clients can drop in. City Hall employees can direct walk-in clients to us during those hours. And we're able to give on-the-spot assistance, advice, empowerment and those sorts of things. We, we have a, the packet we provided, I think it's page 60 of your agenda there. You can kind, you can take a look at that and see some of our results. We've helped over 160 clients since January. And I just wanted to thank the council and the city for being so welcoming and facilitating of our presence in the city hall. I think we signed the contract in late December or early January and like four days later had a space to host our clinic and, and have been there every Thursday ever since. So we just really appreciate that support to be, to be present. We've noticed that, you know, our clients are low-income. So the ability, it, it makes a big difference if somebody can take, you know, walk a few minutes or take a bus right down to city hall as opposed to having to trek it all the way into downtown Tacoma where our, our main office is located. It's really an access to justice. It increases access to justice, just that, that physical accessibility. So we're, we're very appreciative of that. We have, you know, our case outcomes here, if you go to the second page of our packet are really demonstrating that a majority of clients that we're helping, you know, I think everybody who comes through the door really obtains or preserves housing in some way, really improves people's understandings of their legal rights and their ability to avoid an eviction. I think what happens a lot of time is a client gets a scary-looking notice on their door and immediately thinks, okay, well, I've got to get out. You know, there's often language barriers, literacy barriers, all sorts of things like that. So what we're here to do is to keep people housed. You know, keeps, just protect housing, protect people from self-evicting or, or getting evicted. You'll notice that our, the demographics of the clients that we serve, we serve a very, very diverse cross-section of people. We're particularly proud of this because we know that traditionally underserved and underrepresented clients tend to be, you know, BIPOC people. So the fact that our program, as a program of lawyers, which is a traditionally, you know, historically kind of an unwelcoming profession in terms of, you know, welcoming BIPOC populations and clients. We've done a lot of work to establish trust and, and kind of rebuild relationships with communities. And so we're proud to serve a wide and diverse cross-section of Lakewood residents. The other thing that I wanted to note about this program in particular, this is our, we call it our HELP program, so it's our homeless eviction legal prevention program. And in our Housing Justice Project, if you think of it like an umbrella, HELP is over here and then we have our Right to Counsel program over here. So our HELP team, which is what serves Lakewood in part, is really focused on preventing evictions from happening in the first place. So like I said, when people get those notices, kind of helping, what we're really trying to do is prevent people from getting those notices in the first place. And a couple of case examples, I attended a clinic in Lakewood a month or two ago and there were four clients who came to the clinic. I think three of the clients were single moms. And they all, they had a variety of issues. They had mold in their apartments, they had abusive landlords, they had, you know, neighbors doing all sorts of stuff. And they, you know, the consistent theme among all of the appointments that I observed was that they couldn't afford to leave. They were all working, they were doing everything they could to make ends meet. And they just wanted to stay in their apartment. That's where their kids go to school, that's where they have community. They just wanted to stay there. And even if they did want to leave, there was nowhere for them to go because of, you know, prices are increasing everywhere. So nobody really has first month's rent, last month's rent and a deposit to move. And so those are the people that we are helping keep their homes. We work with them to, a lot of people are, all they need is a little bit of information and then they can go take the fight to the landlord and be successful. If not, then we can step in and write a letter. If we need to do more than that, then we can take the case on for, for more representation. So we do offer a wide range of services. So that's, that's the HELP team that's, that's centered in Lakewood. And I had mentioned that under the umbrella of our Housing Justice Project, we have the HELP team and we have the Right to Counsel program. So in the event that our services are not successful in that pre-eviction arena, then we can transfer the client over to our Right to Counsel program. And that's separately funded, not, not funded by Lakewood. But I just wanted to highlight that, you know, it's, you're leveraging your dollars here because we have a lot of other programs that the clients can access and we're happy to help transfer them if, if we need to. We have domestic violence programs and volunteer legal programs, all sorts of things. So yeah, we're just, we're really proud of our, our clinic. We have, it's staffed by BIPOC women almost exclusively. And so I had mentioned this in one of the narrative reports, but what, what I was talking to our staff about is that anecdotally, there's kind of this, there's a feeling of hope and power when it's a, when there are, we have our black female attorney and a black female paralegal and a black client and they're all sitting in that room together. It's, it's, it's very empowering and, you know, very positive and wonderful. So we're very grateful for your support and we're very proud of our program. It's been a big success and we're looking forward to continuing to build over the next year and a half.
Well, thank you, Carly. I appreciate that. Mr. Anderson has a question. There may be some others.
So far since federal COVID funding has been flowing into the community, Pierce County has distributed through providers over $100 million in state and federal rental assistance. What portion of your clientele have you directed to the rental assistance program successfully?
That's a good question. I don't know the exact number off the top of my head. I do know that we work very, very closely with rental assistance. I mean, I wouldn't be surprised if it's almost every single client that comes through our doors. If, if back rent is the issue, I do think that we work, we work closely with them. A number of our outreach events are actually, we do outreach with rental assistance from Pierce County. So, you know, we, we do a couple outreach events every week. This last quarter, I know we did at least a handful in Lakewood. One at the Lakewood Library is coming to mind in particular. And that one, I believe, was in partnership with the Pierce County Rental Assistance. So pretty much anybody that we can connect to rental assistance, that is our goal. Absolutely.
Thank you. Along those lines, with regard to the majority of the client needs that come to your agency for assistance, would you think that 90% or greater is related to unpaid rent? Or other issues? And if there are other issues, it would be interesting to know what sort of challenges do the tenants in Lakewood have with their landlords here?
Yeah, I, I do think most people, it's, it's back owed rent for sure. I, I think that a lot of people in the HELP program, it's habitability issues. And you know, concerns with, I think it's mostly habitability concerns. When I was in the clinic, one, our attorney, Siranda Ross, got on the phone with one of the code enforcers, one of the city of Lakewood. I, I don't know if that's the correct title, but, and was like, hey, I'm sitting here with a client and this is the situation and, you know, what can you do to help us out? So that's just another example of, you know, just a little bit of information and just talking to the right person and an attorney. And the code enforcer was like, yeah, let's see what we can do. And, and made that connection and was able to help the client right, like down 10 a.m. on a Thursday. So that, that was pretty cool.
Great. We're hopeful that our rental housing safety program is, is bearing fruit. We believe it is.
Yeah.
It's creating, you know, safer and more supportive housing for sure for folks out there. So that's good to hear.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Mr. Branson has one.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. And in your report that's provided to us today, there are a couple of reports, charts. And under, under outcomes, there, there's a, there's a repetitive outcome that says, housing obtained or preserved, housing owned or rented or improved quality of housing. And there's, majority of the clients have that as the outcome. What does that mean?
Great question. So let's say a client would come in and was, I, I think, I think going back to the rental assistance questions, as I can, I can think of an example. So a client comes in and they owe back rent, but they've applied to rental assistance. And so what the, what the housing provider is supposed to do is wait until that rental assistance comes through. Let's say the housing provider is becoming aggressive, trying, you know, other ways to get the tenant out of the apartment, you know, threatening them, doing all, all sorts of unsavory things. We are able to step in and represent the tenant and say, you know, write a letter. Nobody likes to get a letter from an attorney letterhead. Say, hey, we know what you're doing, this is illegal, this is, these are the steps the client has taken to get rental assistance, this is when the payment is expected to come. We would mark, and, and, you know, the, the housing provider backs off. Because, you know, like I said, nobody likes to get that letter from an attorney. We would consider that preserving housing. So we would mark that outcome as preserved housing because the client would then stay in the housing as opposed to being intimidated into having to move.
So it, it sounds like that's a successful outcome. But I guess would the clients concur? That they got a successful outcome? I mean, is, is, is that listing on this chart mean that a client was satisfied with the outcome?
Yes. Yeah, I think, I believe so. You know, what we hear over and over again is that housing is really expensive. And I had mentioned it a little bit earlier, but people really want to stay where they're at. And if they don't want to stay where they're at, they need some time to save money in order to move. And, but consistently, what we've heard over and over again is that people really do want to stay. They don't want to leave. So preserving housing is definitely the goal. So preserving housing is definitely the goal.
Okay. And then there are a significant number of places of where the outcomes column says unknown. And, and it's, and, and then it shows that the, the case was closed. And it says an administrative agency decision. What agency has the bureaucrats that are that are, that are pulling the plug on this point?
Yeah. So the administrative agency decision slice, the colors are, get a little confusing. There's a lot of blues in this pie chart. The administrative agency, there's only actually a few cases. I think I can pull up the exact number, but I, I think it's, it's three. It's only three out of 162. So that blue is actually one of the smaller slices. I think this larger blue section of the pie chart is blank. And those are cases that are still not closed. So there are ongoing representations where we haven't completed the representation and completed the outcome yet. So they've been opened. We've engaged with the client, but have not completed the outcome.
Okay. And again, again, I just, as, as you've been, been doing this, how many repeat clients do you get? You think you get it resolved and two months later they're back? With, 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 with a different concern or, or, or an ongoing problem?
It's not, it hasn't been that frequent because we've only been in, you know, doing this program in Lakewood specifically since January, but we would welcome any return clients. Where we always tell people, you know, you're welcome back here and we'd be happy to help you again.
In your presentation, you mentioned there were considerable number of single, uh, s- s- single family parents. And it does seem that about 75% of the folks that saw your assistance were women.
Yes.
Is do you attribute that to how the program is, is marketed?
You know, I don't know. I think I just attribute it to the need in the community.
Okay. And I, and I, and I thank you for your positive comments about, about our staff and, and making both you welcoming. And I am assuming that that means that they're, that, that, that the clients coming here felt welcomed as well. That this is a safe place to come and have those conversations to, to be able to go and do that. You have any recommendations though about how we can be better hosts?
I don't. We, when we started the program with our first January clinic in January, we had appointment slots and then we had the walk-in time and for a couple of weeks, we didn't have any walk-in appointments. Now we're getting to the, to the point where we have, we have plenty of walk-in. We have a ton of walk-in business. So you might actually be too good of a host. Because we're getting a lot of business. So, um, that's great though. And anybody we can't help in person, you know, our staff are wonderful though. They will stay and they will help people. And then if, and if for whatever reason there's a time crunch, we also offer appointments telephonically. So we're always able to connect with people.
Okay. I, well, I guess we'll, we'll avoid putting too good a host in boy's job evaluation. Okay. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Again, thank you. Thank you for coming. We appreciate the update and we're pleased to see that many Lakewood families are getting the assistance that we are funding. So thanks.
Thank you very much.
Great. Well, next on the agenda is our public comment session. Just a reminder, we do have a public hearing tonight as well. So those of you who have signed in to address the public hearing on the 2022 comprehensive plan amendments, that will be later on the regular agenda. But this is the time for public comments. They're accepted by mail, email or live virtual or in-person comment. Comments may be sent to Ms. Schumacher at her email address, bshumacher@cityoflakewood.us. Those received up to an hour before the meeting have been provided to the city council electronically. The clerk will now read the names of those who have submitted comments in advance of tonight's meeting.
Mayor, we received comments in advance of this evening's meeting from James Dunlop.
Any others? That's it? Okay. So at this time, any member of the audience may comment on items related to city business under this public comment period. Please note, your comment is limited to three minutes per person. And again, if you intend to speak to the 2022 comprehensive plan amendments, please note that that time will be later under the regular agenda portion of tonight's meeting. So first on the docket, Mr. Dunlop.
My name is James Dunlop and I am a Lakewood resident. I've been listening to council members discussing the library system. And I think you agree that Pierce County Library System has been abusing Lakewood for years. And organizations like humans seldom change. And I want to applaud Councilmember Anderson for his remarks about de-annexation. He succinctly summed up the situation and he put an approximate price tag on leaving the library system. To have a robust Lakewood library system, property owners might pay one to $2 million a year more. Where I disagree with Mr. Anderson is his suggestion that de-annexation could be a mere threat. I repeat, people and organizations don't change. I'm nonetheless, I'm nonetheless sure that if Pierce County Library System genuinely thought Lakewood might de-annex, they would start behaving for a while. But as in every abusive relationship, the abuser always returns to their abusive ways. Councilmember Anderson also said that the council needs to act sooner rather than later. I agree. The 1991 agreement with Pierce County Library System makes it clear that the proceeds of any sale of the old Tensla building have to be used in the Lakewood area. We don't want the money frittered away on providing temporary services. No, we need to get out of the Pierce County Library System and become part of the new Lakewood Library System. You will of course have to recognize that the ad hoc library committee is now moot. Things have moved on. I should also add that although saving the Tensla building and leaving the library system are separate issues, there may be ways to restore the old building without needing a bond issue. For example, grants from outside organizations. But doesn't the prospect of Lakewood having its own library system sound exciting? That would be a sign that the city has really arrived. And when justifying the development of affordable housing, we're always told that Lakewood is a growing community. Big enough to sustain its own library system. The present council have an opportunity to turn a challenge into an opportunity. I therefore ask for council to give Lakewood residents a ballot on de-annexation in line with RCW 2712380. We can make this work.
Thank you. Next. Dagmar Ivanica.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Dagmar and I'm a scientist and doctor from Europe. I'm here visiting my friends. I've been exploring this beautiful town Lakewood and I came across a road called Phillips Road. And I'm, I've been shocked and horrified when I've seen the, the, the Gary Oaks being ripped off. I, I've never seen this happening in Europe. Like we always try to incorporate and include nature in building new things. Such as tree canopy, for example. In my opinion, it's very important to keep nature such as aesthetics and also like it helps physical and mental health to keep. So thank you very much. I just wanted to comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. Next, Christina Minetti.
My name's Christina Minetti of Lakewood. At least a couple of you live in Oak Brook, I believe. And so maybe what I'm going to say is not new to you. My neighbor was horrified when he saw that trees, oak trees were being cut down on Phillips Road. And so I went to take a look today. Yeah, I, I was able to see the remnants of five of them. All of them were at least significant trees. Two of them would have even qualified for priority habitat. If you add them all together. So, um, you know, there was no reason to cut them down. There are no trees on the other side. They could have put the sidewalk on the other side. If you have a sidewalk, you want to have trees over it. So when people walk, they have shade over them. So it was completely, you know, egregious cutting down of Gary Oak trees, which are supposed to be protected, as you know. The, you know, always we hear in the city that, oh, you can't infringe on private property owners' rights. Of course, this was city property apparently, that they put the sidewalk on. So you don't even protect the trees on city property. I was told that I should buy up land where there are private trees, but the city won't protect even their own trees. So that's the property owner who was there and he had about three or four Gary Oaks cut down, I think four. He said he, he wasn't asked. He was told. Nobody asked the neighbors. Do they want a sidewalk there? They, they, he was just told and they told him he cut, they cut down one and they cut down three or four. He sent you a letter, I think, Mr. Whalen. So, I mean, this just lays bare the city's profound hypocrisy. After one year of exertion of paying $60,000 for the consultants and having the ad hoc committee and saying you're going to improve everything and having the film about how you protect trees and on and on, still you have allowed these trees to be cut down. I mean, all the talk about climate change, carbon sequestration, no net loss, GMA, tree canopy expansion, these are all empty words. So, and we even told you, it's not like you didn't know, right? We've been telling you for a year. So, um, you know, the property owners outraged, I'm outraged, my family, neighbors and friends. And I ask you to stop this hypocrisy and protect the Gary Oaks and other trees on your property of the city and private property wherever they are. I expect you to protect Gary Oaks and other trees.
Those are the only individuals signed up to address council during the public comment period physically. Unless there are any others in the audience who wish to address the council, if you'd like to, feel free to approach the podium. If not, we will ask those who are appearing virtually if they'd like to address the council during the public comment period. And we have several virtual commentators. Mr. Haugen appears to be the first on the list.
Dennis Haugen, formerly a Lakewood resident, now Sioux Falls, South Dakota. Well, math is interesting. He made decisions 2018, 2020. He wanted to be a sanctuary state. Well, I don't know how you ever figured that unlimited number of people wouldn't sooner or later overwhelm the whole system. And interestingly, Mayor Bowser of Washington DC today was complaining that, that illegal immigrants were starting to push out the vacancies for the homeless that are in Washington DC. And there's no doubt that you're planning here, which can get to the basic premise of your problem. That you'll be talking very differently in six months to a year. And I recommend that you not build a library, that you're not to get as much ground covered by warehouses as possible. Because you're going to start to feel the influence of illegal immigration. As Seattle has already declared that fentanyl is now the big problem. And they've declared an emergency declaration to such. It's a long time until we get another election and we can get some of these decision makers fired. And your governor is no exception. Many of your state representatives are no exception. They need to be fired. Or they never go along with this situation. Now I realize that many of you are probably just watching the Chinese news network, which includes a lot of the, a lot of the basic bigger news organizations and you don't know what's going on. But they're flowing into the United States in huge streams, long lines that go all the way across Mexico. And they're coming from every country in the world. And they're coming, since they're unvetted, they're coming with drugs. Fentanyl will be your biggest problem by Christmas time. And, you know, it's they're pushing out the homeless. And you won't know where you're going to put anybody by, by this fall. And then you still probably won't get a relief for another two years after that. So you'll be talking a completely different story in just a few months. Thank you.
Next, Addo.
How y'all doing tonight? My name's Addo Equitas and I'm the chairman of the Panther Party. Oh man, where to start? Y'all went deep today. Okay. Um, so let's talk about the school district. It was a great presentation. I'm really glad that everybody's looking at mental wellness. That's fantastic. You might want to ask some more questions though. Maybe ask why they're experiencing mental crisis. So I would really like this not to just be a, hey, do you want to learn more about mental health? Let's focus on mental health. Part of mental health, especially for a child, is the mental health of the adult, the mental health of their parents. It's a huge impact on the mental health of the child. So let's focus on their parents for a second. Let's talk about how much the parents are suffering in Lakewood. And how hard it is to pay for their homes. Your lawyer said it herself. Y'all have too many people walking in saying, hey, my house is about to get taken. That might be a problem. And then we go directly into the houseless talk. It was a great speech that they had. And I don't know if you guys noticed, but she said 58% of the people go to full-time housing. That means 42% of the people that they help don't. You have a 58% success rate. A 58% success rate is an F. You are failing. Do better for the people. If people's rent is too high, don't send them to a lawyer to fight the landlord. Cap their rent. Be there for the people. That's all this is. If you want to talk about the mental health of the kids, do something for the kids. Don't just talk about it in these meetings. If you want to do something for the houseless community, stop gentrifying our neighborhoods and forcing people into the streets. And then there won't be a houseless community. We don't need lawyers to help us stay in houses. If these landlords can't keep kicking people out and then raising their If these landlords can't keep kicking people out and then raising their rents to where nobody can afford it besides your friends, all power to the people.
Next, Lysentia Immortalis.
Hi, my name is Lysentia Immortalis, and I am the chief of staff of the Panther Party. I was listening about, you know, funding for the tiny home project that they were doing. And I had this great idea of how you can, how you could fund the tiny home program. I would think that, you know, if you could fire some of your guilty cops and use the millions of dollars that the city has paid out for wrongful death suits, and then you could use that money to end houselessness and starvation, more people are dying in the street than people who die in the rental hotels in San Francisco. I just wanted to point that out because you read part of the story. And the rest of it is, sure, they are leaving the rental hotels because they are dying, but the percentage is very, very, very much lower than it is than people who are actually dying on the streets. I also wanted to address about the social activities that were maintained or not maintained during COVID for houseless members or other community members. And I did want to mention that council member Anderson did manage to keep a social activity for him and his friends to participate in. I mean, didn't you sue Governor Inslee over closing your golf resort or the community golf resort that was so important and none of the other programs were extended or anything? The other thing I wanted to bring up is I would like to know why you're trying to censor people's voices in the community. We and other community members have been restricted and banned from your Facebook Lakewood community page that the city of Lakewood admins and moderates. Our emails have been blocked from your city server. I'm curious as what, what do you not want the community to know? You don't want them to know that you're cutting down hundreds of trees that are hundreds of years old, that developers that participated in your economic strategy board are also people who contributed and donated to your campaigns. And one of the things I recommended was building a better library all the way back in 2017, increase rents so that you can attract, you know, higher income community members. And one of the bad things was that you had so many houseless individuals, but if you brought in more people with higher income, that they would hopefully go to another location and it would just go away. So now you have people getting evicted. And as Tacoma Probono stated, they are actually helping the community members avoid evictions from the rental increases that you threw into motion to attract community members with higher incomes. So you are basically responsible for that.
Thank you. Next, we have Dosaria Farmacus from Pullman, I believe.
Yes, my name is Dosaria Farmacus. I'm the Minister of Information of the Panther Party. And man, because I know that was in question last time. I would just actually like to congratulate y'all. I know you've been getting some, you know, hard, hard truths from my comrades, but I'm going to go ahead and congratulate y'all today, especially you, Councilmember Anderton, on your thriftiness. Because you were so concerned when they were talking about a program to help the homeless people, which, you know, obviously we have a system that's falling apart, you know, like Dennis Haugen was saying. The system was so fragile to begin with, right? Capitalism was so fragile that, you know, it's, once it runs into these moments of crisis, it immediately starts falling apart. We have homeless people all over the place because the system can't take care of people. And we don't want to change the system because that would be bad for profits and economic liberty or some, something. I'm not sure. Anyway, so you are cleverly, very cleverly recognizing that we need to be figuring out, you know, we can't help all of these homeless people, right? We can't do that because that would be a waste of resources. So I want to thank you on, on your hard work to make sure that only the homeless people who are deserving of help get to get rounded up by the police and get put in the tiny homes. I do have a concern, though, which is that it might actually be a waste of police resources if they have to go out and decide which homeless people deserve a place to stay. And that might take away from them doing their real jobs, like, you know, oppressing minorities, murdering Said Joaquin, things like that. So I was wondering, now, a man named Jonathan Swift in the 1700s, I believe, saw a similar issue in Dublin, and he proposed a much more expedient and cost-effective solution, which is that instead of, you know, spending all this time trudging through, figuring out, does this homeless person deserve help? Does this houseless person deserve help? How can we help them? How can we figure out, get our, you know, cops to go figure out which ones we can stick in a tiny box? Maybe we can eat them. So, I mean, I think that we could make this happen. You know, there's a lot of different ways that a houseless individual can be prepared for consumption, shipped off. Obviously, we're dealing with a food crisis, you know. There's a conflict in, you know, the conflict in Russia and Ukraine is taking up a lot of resources, really reducing the world's wheat supply. We're seeing food prices rise. So I think that a way to drive those down would be to start, yeah, rounding these people up instead of going through all of this trouble to figure out where they're from, get their documentation, find out their history. I mean, this is a lot of work when we can simply slaughter them and put them on the shelves for consumption and feed the people in our communities in so doing. So, yeah, thank you because you almost got it. But, yeah, you can just take it one step further. All power to the people.
Next, Mr. Dunlop, Tishomer Dunlop.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Tishomer Dunlop, and I'm a resident of Lakewood. I'd like to make a comment about the cutting down of at least five, if I remember correctly, Gary Oaks on the road by Hutloff Middle School, which I used to attend. Apparently, these were, these oaks were cut down to make a sidewalk. And as somebody who's attended Hutloff Middle School, the majority of people go by, get picked up by car and not go by foot. So these five beautiful, large trees were cut down to make a sidewalk that probably very few people will use. And I've noticed that around Lakewood, there have been quite a few sidewalks that have been made in areas where frankly, nobody uses them. And in addition, you know, with the ad hoc tree committee and the goals of canopy cover and increasing canopy cover and protecting Gary Oaks specifically, one would think that the city would start to protect Gary Oaks more. But if, if I understand correctly, these Gary Oaks were, you know, they were on public, public land. So there was no private property rights to have to worry about. So why did the city cut these oaks down? So it seems like that doesn't really align with all of the canopy goals because five trees is a substantial amount of canopy, and now that's gone. So I think one should reevaluate if sidewalks are really worth irreversibly getting rid of canopy cover. Well, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, next is Bunchy Carter.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, very good, very good. My name is Bunchy Carter. I'm the minister of defense of the Black Panther Party. I am a resident of Lakewood as well. Man, I just want to say, first of all, the tiny house village thing is, that's cool. I like that. That's, that's really a great idea. I like that. And even the Aspen thing, yeah, all of that's beautiful. I only have one issue with the whole thing. And me being minister of defense and you knowing what I normally like to talk to you people about, and I don't mean you people as an insult. We're all people. Why does it take contact with the police for a homeless person or a member of the houseless community, rather? Let me not be that guy. Why is that required for them to get their assistance? Because I'm not sure if y'all understand something, but I did tell this to several of those new recruits that y'all just ushered in a couple of weeks ago. So I'm gonna tell you the same thing I told them. The reason why that doesn't make sense to me is because there is an extreme distrust between the community and the police for a very specific reason. So y'all are politicians. The ones who rank above you are all politicians. The problem is, most of the time, people only see politicians on TV. The only real contact they have with the political process of this country is the police. And a lot of that contact is negative, so to speak. I have some names of some people that I could talk to about that, but that would be a very one-sided conversation, conversation. Just for Said Joaquin, by the way. But I think, I think it's troubling that a person can't decide of their own volition that they want to come get assistance and get off the street without having to have contact with the very people that they spend a large amount of time while they're on the street trying to avoid. It doesn't make sense to me. See, that would be the same as me saying, hey, listen, I understand you have a problem with alcohol. You like to drink too much. I got a place where I can take you to solve that problem for you. But before you can come in here, you have to go holler at my guy over here at the strip club. Now, I know in Washington, y'all don't sell alcohol at strip clubs. I'm from somewhere else. So I, I know that it happens elsewhere. But why would I open a door for you that's going to do you damage just to try to say that I'm trying to help you? And then with your success rate being an F, you have to show me proof that, 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 you have to show me real evidence. Show the people real evidence that this is a constructive thing that you're building. Because all I see around me is destruction in Lakewood. Everything is changing and not a lot of it for the better. I talked to the residents out in Springbrook when we were on patrol the other night, who were so happy to see people on foot trying to do something about the excessive crime that's coming through their city because people are so hopeless. That's what we're here for. All power to the people.
That is the last individual online that has their hand raised to address councillor in the public comment period. If there are any others online that wish to address the councillor in the public comment period, this is your time. I would just address the last comment Mr. Carter made. Mr. Carter, there are others that may or may not know that the city has had an embedded mental health professional with the Lakewood Police Department for any number of years. In fact, we were one of the first jurisdictions to do that. We have funded in the budget a second individual to be with the Lakewood Police Department. We have now a behavioral health contact team. And it's their job, because they're adequately trained, to go out and meet with folks on the street to determine their needs and to figure out if they can avail themselves of services, and if so, what services, and how to get them there. So that's how the quote-unquote "police department", through the skilled assistance of the behavioral health contact team, has made very significant and successful contact with many, many homeless individuals in the city over the last several years since we've had the program. So perhaps it's a matter of education, but I wanted you to know about that. So no other comments during the public comment period? I'll declare it closed. We now turn to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the city council study session of June 27, 2022. B, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of July 5, 2022. C, motion number 2022-53, authorizing the execution of an agreement with Transpo Group for the Lakewood Active Transportation Plan update. D, motion number 2022-54, authorizing the award of a construction contract to Miles Resources LLC in the amount of $753,232.37 for the construction of the Pacific Highway-South Tacoma Way overlay project. E, resolution number 2022-10, setting a public hearing on August 15, 2022 to consider the proposed vacation of the Terminal Westerly 36 feet of 88th Ave Court Southwest, west of the intersection of Wattsworth Street Southwest. E, items filed in the office of the city clerk, one planning commission meeting minutes of June 15, 2022.
Very good. Any items any council member wishes to remove from the consent agenda? Mr. Branstad.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remove item C, which is motion 2022-53.
Any other items anyone wishes to remove? Okay, do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda at this time minus item C? Is there a second?
Second.
Good. It's been moved by council member Farmer, seconded by council member Bell, that we adopt a consent agenda minus item C. Is there any further discussion? Very good. If not, all those in favor of adoption of the consent agenda minus item C signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Consent agenda has been adopted. We now turn to item C, which is motion 2022-53, authorizing the execution of an agreement with Transpo Group for the Lakewood Active Transportation Plan update. Mr. Branstad, did you have a thought or comment on this before we ask for a motion to adopt?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this actually, this relates to getting the non-motorized transportation plan updated. And it's well overdue. We've been, we've had this on our to-do list for a number of years. And it's something that needs to be done. Over the years, I get a lot of comments from people in the public and ideas and things about non-motorized transportation bicycle paths, where, where they'd like to see things, where they would like to have and not have sidewalks and such. My concern with the motion has, and with the contract that the motion authorizes, is that it is minimizes public input in the, in the consultant updating the plan. The, the, the contract calls for the only public input to be an online survey that would be developed by the consultant. And then they will rewrite and, and the update to the plan. We're not, it's not to do, and we don't need to do a whole new plan. We need to update the 2009 plan. But I don't think a single online survey is the only public outreach element in doing something that I think has great interest in, in the community and, quite honest, significant importance to those of us on the dais and budgetary impacts going forward is, is adequate. And so I'm, you're not, not in favor of improving a contract with a scope of work that is, as stated, again, particularly with the section of the scope of work that relates to engage with the community that seems like almost no engagement at all.
Mr. Coffield, did you want to address that question at this time?
Actually, Mayor and Council, I'll call upon our Public Works Engineering Director, Paul Busic.
It was appearing virtually, I understand.
Good evening, Mayor Whalen, members of city council. In response to council member Branstad's comments, yes, there is identified limited amount of public engagement with our consultants. However, that does not mean that we're not going to do more public outreach with internal city staff, use the city's website to reach out to people, and contacting special interest groups like Cascade Bicycle Club. What you have before you is the scope of work the consultants are going to be able to do for us on this work.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Busic. Any questions of Mr. Busic while we're on the topic before I call for a motion? Okay, very good. I will ask for a motion to adopt motion 2022-53, which is the authorization of this agreement with the Transpo Group. It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Moss, seconded by Councilmember Anderson, that we adopt motion 2022-53. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Oh, Ms. Farmer. I thought you were pointing this way. I was looking.
I understand. We traditionally called this the non-motorized plan, and there's a new industry term of active transportation plan. And I'm wondering, for transparency purposes for the public and anybody who might go looking for history, if it's possible to update some of our documents that reference the non-motorized plan, if we're going to now call it the active transportation plan? Just, just something to think about.
Certainly, as we go forward with the process, it's a conversation we can have. Thank you very much. Any further comments or discussion on this particular motion before us? If not, all those in favor of Motion 2022-53 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion 2022-53 has been adopted. We now turn to the regular agenda. Whoa, sorry about that. This is the time for public hearings and appeals. This is the date set for the public hearing on the 2022 Comprehensive Plan Amendments. And for this overview, I call on our Planning Manager Tiffany Spear.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one quick moment. So this evening is your public hearing on the 2022 Comprehensive Plan Amendment Package. Through the Resolution 202114 last year, the council set the docket as seven items. The Planning Commission reviewed portions of the docket over a series of months this year, held their Planning Commission public hearing on May 18, responded to the public comment provided, and then took action on June 15 through their Resolution 202204 to recommend action to the council. The way this has happened to date is a number of things were talked about in detail because there were a number of complex items. These were discussed last week at the City Council. Tonight, I'm just going to be extremely brief in reminding everyone involved, perhaps those who are speaking this evening, of the seven items. So the first is a one parcel rezone near the St. Clair campus. The arrows on your graphic here point out it's a, for the most part, a parking lot, but there is a tree stand in the northeast corner that was intended through the St. Clair's master plan historically to be preserved. And so this rezoning to open space and recreation is for that purpose. The second is the most complex out of all of the amendments, and this is five parts. Quickly, it is adding an addendum to the 2011 Tlicum Neighborhood Plan, highlighting the progress made on all of the implementation items identified back in 2011. Second is to rezone a number of parcels within the Tlicum area. Third is to look at the boundaries and propose resetting the boundaries for the Center of Local Importance in Tlicum. Fourth is some Comprehensive Plan text amendments, and then fifth is a brief Development Regulation text amendment. Part of what it was also provided to you is a recommendation from the commission, is that there would be a full review of the Tlicum Neighborhood Plan as part of the 2024 periodic update. It is a subarea per RCWs, and it is something that, because of resources and time, this time around was not a full review. It was simply a status update. So the recommendation was to conduct that more full review over the next few years. I'll jump ahead to the third. This is an update of the Housing Chapter and related amendments in the Development Regulations Regarding Housing, and this is recommended by the Planning Commission to be continued into the 2024 update as well. The Fourth Amendment is to take a look at adult family homes being allowed within air corridor one and two, and the recommendation from the Planning Commission with reservation, but they understood the law is what the law is, that the amendments to Title 18A, B, and C all recommend the allowance of adult family homes within the air corridor zones because of, in particular, you'll see, first of all, RCW 71, 128, 140, stated about two-thirds of the way down on this slide, and also the language in blue at the bottom, there's been case law, and in particular, a case involving the City of Lakewood on this question, which said in no uncertain terms that where residential activity is allowed, so are adult family The Fifth Amendment is to just update the Comprehensive Plan to reflect the adoption of Vision 2050, the most recent version of the multi-county planning policies, and also to rename Centers of Local Importance to be Centers of Municipal Importance in order to comply with the latest version of the regional and countywide planning policies. The Sixth Amendment is to update certain figures and texts within the Comprehensive Plan to reflect the adoption of the most recent Parks Legacy Plan, as well as references to the downtown and Lakewood Station District subareas. The final one is related to parking, and this was discussed last week with the council, but there were a number of questions brought to the Planning Commission, and then the response back to you was incorporated into the proposed ordinance for this amendment. Essentially, really quickly there, you'll see in blue, underlined text, the changes, but a few changes within the citywide and then within the parking that's specific to the Lakewood Station District has been offered. So as the hearing is tonight, the current city council schedule is for action on August 1. Thank you, and happy to answer questions if need be.
Well, thank you very much for that overview. Are there any questions of Ms. Spear before we open the public hearing? Mr. Anderson.
Spear, with respect to the St. Clair proposed change, has St. Clair offered an opinion?
They're in support of it. Yes, they were contacted when we were putting together the recommendations of the Planning Commission.
So is it necessary to restrict, restrict over five acres to preserve a grove that's already preserved under a binding site plan?
The intention by...
What's the change accomplish?
The change accomplishes this before the departure of Mr. Buwer. He wanted to make sure this was on the books.
I'm sorry, you're speaking a little bit too fast for, a mass for me to understand.
Apologies. The reason this is in front of you this evening is because Community and Economic Development Director Dave Buwer wanted to make sure that this was adopted before he would leave Lakewood within the near future. His career is, as he anticipates, coming toward an end, and he wanted to make sure this was encoded before he left.
Okay. That didn't answer my question, though. What's gained?
What's gained?
Yeah. If we have a grove, we have a grove of trees that's protected by a binding site plan, why do you need to restrict the zoning on over five acres? What, what's gained?
The fact that it is then zoned that way should ownership change over time. An alternate way the city could address this, I suppose, is to subdivide and take just the tree stand and move it over into different zoning. From what I understand, the master plan, from whenever it was looked at by the city and approved, anticipated that this was going to be the zoning for that tree stand.
So the answer is nothing's gained?
I can't answer that question for you, Mr. Anderson. It came from Mr. Buwer. He can provide a better answer than I can.
Another question? Courtney, Ole Miss Court.
Councilmember Anderson, a binding site plan can be amended via hearing examiner, so it wouldn't come back before the City Council, whereas by changing the, the zone, any future proposed change would come back before the City Council.
To degree of permanency, semi-permanency?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I have one other question with respect to the Tlicum amendments. Let's see if I can make my computer go the right place. We end up having inconsistent zoning along the frontage of American Lake near Bill's What's the reasoning for, I think it's the Silcox property is there? What's the reason for changing the zoning of the Silcox property to make it different than other lakefront property?
If you're asking about the parcel that Bill's Boathouse was located on?
Next door.
Next door. That was recommended through staff analysis to be rezoned because of the request to look at not only Silcox's corporation private request to rezone, and then the Habitat for Humanity request to rezon in the area. Staff took a look at that and tried to make it a little more geographically logical and have more parcels than just those private applications would have covered, rezoned into R3 from MR2.
Oh, it's being... So basically, the frontage of American Lake is, for the most part, R3?
Correct.
And we're creating an MR2 that runs down to the lake where no others exist? Is that correct?
I believe so. The Silcox Island Corporation requested a particular parcel be rezoned as part of this cycle, and then Habitat for Humanity nearby over by Boat Street.
And what does that, what does that allow them to do what they can't do now?
I can't hear you, sir.
What does that allow them to do what they can't, that they can't do now?
To have it rezoned to be R3 or MR2?
Yeah, when it's changed to MR2, what can they do now? What could they do as MR2 that they can't do now?
It's a little more of the commercial side, a little more of the multifamily type of housing, as opposed to single-family detached on smaller-sized lots.
And has anyone from the city reached out to Bill's Boathouse? It had a rather devastating fire there, and the possibility of redevelopment exists, and the possibility of it languishing also exists as open space, and there's an issue, since they were closed down for a couple of years, to what extent their non-conforming use could be restored?
There has been discussion between Mr. Buwer and several architects on behalf of the family. Members of the family have met with Mr. Buwer. There's been discussion about the fact that the current zoning does allow a rebuild of a like operation. The open space and recreation does include a restaurant. However, the family is still trying to decide what they're going to do, and it's anticipated they may come to the city in the 23 or 24 amendment cycle to request whatever rezone they may wish to do, or just simply say we're ready to redevelop like for like.
So an OSR2 will allow a restaurant?
Yes.
That's probably the highest and best use. But, so, I can see where they'd be interested in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, I will open the public hearing. This is the date set for the public hearing on the 2022 Comprehensive Plan Amendments. Public hearing and testimony, rather, may be accepted by mail, email, or live virtual in-person comment. Testimony may be sent in advance by mail or email to Ms. Schumacher, our City Clerk, at bshumacher@cityoflakewood.us. Those comments received up to an hour before the meeting have been provided to the City Council electronically, and the clerk will now read the names of those who have submitted comments in advance.
Mayor, we received testimony in advance from John Ficker.
Thank you. Testimony at this public hearing is limited to three minutes per person. Virtual testimony may be provided by telephone, dial-in, enter the meeting ID number as represented on the screen. If you'd like to join our Zoom meeting, you may do so. Use the raise the hand function to be called upon, and we will certainly do so. At this time, I have the public hearing sign-in sheet, and there were a few individuals that initially signed in. Mr. Steve Suber is first on the list. And Frank Sawatsky?
Excuse me, not to speak.
Very good, sir. Any others in the audience who wish to address the council during the public hearing on the 2022 Comprehensive Plan Amendments? If not, Madam Clerk, will you let us know of those attendees who wish to address the hearing on Zoom?
Mayor, there are currently no attendees on Zoom with their virtual hands raised.
Very good. Are there any, any, any others out there in the virtual universe who wish to address the 2022 Comprehensive Plan Amendments during this public hearing? If not, I'll declare the public hearing closed. We'll now turn to Resolutions. Resolution Number 2022-08, Madam Clerk.
Resolution Number 2022-08, authorizing the issuance of a conditional certificate of acceptance of tax exemption within a residential target area to AmeriGlaze Restoration LLC.
Thank you. For this, we have our Planning Manager Courtney Brunel.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. This project was last before you on July 5, and following that meeting, staff requested an amendment to the proposed agreement to reflect 100% set aside of affordable units as part of this proposal, which was included on the applicant's initial and revised application. On July 12, we were made aware that the ownership had changed and that the new owners would be submitting a new application for tax exemption. At this time, we recommend via minute motion that the council decline to approve Resolution 2022-08 per the applicant's request and based on the change of ownership. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Was there been any inquiry of the changed ownership about their intent on the housing units?
I believe that they intend to move forward with a 20% set aside, the same number of housing units, seven units.
As opposed to 100% that was discussed last week, or last time?
Correct.
Very good. So I don't know if we need a motion to set it aside. We can just table it indefinitely? City Attorney? Do you have a motion to table it? Well, if, if we just don't bring the motion up, it is decline, right? If I ask for a motion and...
It was raised, the City Clerk and I...
Oh, we did defer it to a date certain, didn't we? Okay, so we need to have a motion to decline consideration of the motion which has been deferred to this date certain. Do I have such a motion?
I move that we decline Resolution Number 2022-08.
Very good. Do I have a second? It's been moved by Councilmember Bokey, seconded by Deputy Mayor Moss, that we decline consideration of Resolution 2022-08. Any further discussion? Fall in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Resolution 2022-08 has been declined at this time. We now turn to Resolution 2022-09, Madam Clerk.
Resolution Number 2022-09, authorizing the inclusionary housing incentive design covenant for permit number 1622 Meadow Park 55 Design Review.
Again, we have our Planning Manager Courtney Brunel for this matter.
Thank you, Mayor. Also, following the July 5 regular meeting, staff worked with the developer to revise the draft covenant in order to include a provision for the housing type of 55 and over. The change is found on Page 4 of the attached covenant shown on Item J. This evening, it is recommended the mayor and city council approve the Meadow Park 55 Design Review Proposal Permit Number 1622 to utilize the Lakewood Municipal Code's Housing Incentives Program and record a covenant to permit a 63-unit, 55-and-over multifamily development with associated parking at 7721, 7731, Dean Street West, and 5402, 77th Street West to include six extremely low-income units. Thank you, Mayor.
Any questions of Ms. Brunel? Mr. Branstadter.
Ms. Brunel, when we last reviewed this, there, the question of the covenant was that, that there was, there was a covenant regarding affordable units, and that, that, but that, but that the covenant did not yet address and would need another covenant to address 55, plus being the requirement. So is, is that now incorporated into a single covenant? Or, or, or how is it that we have confirmed that this will be a 55-plus unit of development?
Thank you, Councilmember Branstadter. Following our last meeting, we did work with the developer in what originally was proposed to be two separate covenants, one before City Council and one recorded separately to protect the use type. They suggested that they could just combine into one, and Item J now includes that it will be a 55-and-over community. They did put in there a line item that essentially says they can come back to the city and request, if they were able to find additional parking, which we spoke about last time, to change the use type to a more traditional multifamily setup. But that would require an amendment to this covenant, which would require review by the City Council. In the meantime, this covenant will be recorded and show up on a title... In the meantime, this covenant will be recorded and show up on a title report on the property.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Anderson?
I'm concerned with the last sentence or, or last portion of the sentence of item J, which shall not be in reasonably withheld. So it essentially says, if they find parking, they can do away with the fifty-five and over designation. I thought the council's intent was to have this come back as a covenant that required it to be a fifty-five and over unit.
Councilmember Anderson, I think that where we were coming from this, from staff as well as the developers' perspective, is the Housing Incentives Program doesn't give a specification regarding use type. So what it allows for is a housing density bonus, parking incentives, in some cases, fee reductions. And in order to become compliant with other provisions in our code, the standard use type table, they needed to be able to reduce the parking requirement, which brought us to the fifty-five and over use type.
I understand that, but isn't it, the granting of the exemption is totally discretionary with council, correct?
Correct.
So we could say, you, we want you to paint it red as a condition, and we could do that legally. And here it says they can buy a couple of parking spaces across the street and it's no longer has to be a fifty-five and over unit.
They would have to come up with about twenty-five parking spaces in order for it to be a more standard multifamily project.
Today, but when the Growth Management Act tells us that we have to do away with parking, everything has to be transit, they won't have to have any parking spaces. And we won't have a fifty-five and over unit.
They would be
I'm just concerned, I'm concerned here because we were, there was some confusion before on these and now it's coming back with the staff representation that's a fifty-five and over unit and that's not what it says. It says it starts that way.
If I, I may
I'm not in favor of the motion.
Ms. McKaten, did you have a question for us?
Well, I think the code right now would allow them to bring forward this type of, of development without fifty-five. Or if they could come up with parking consistent with your code, they would be entitled to this. Again, the code is, is silent as to fifty-five and older housing. This is something in a separate section, so.
It, it's worth mentioning that the current, they currently have approval for a forty-two unit development separated into two buildings. What they were looking for was to add, again, this third building, which is an additional twenty-one units. And they proposed to make the entire project fifty-five and over to meet our parking requirement. But outlined or outright in the code, they would be able to, if they were to find additional parking, apply for a fifty-four unit development based off of the lot size. So a fifty-four unit multifamily development, no provision for senior, senior housing, would be able to be located here, assuming that they found those additional parking spaces.
Okay, Mr. Branstadter, then Mr. Bo.
Yeah. I understand that subsection J here essentially gives great latitude to the developer regarding the future of this development. And if they were to find additional parking and they, and, and they had just developed it without this exception that we're granting them for the additional units. But we're granting them the ability to have more units than would normally be authorized on that site. And the value to the city to doing that, the greater of the, there are several values, but the greater value is it would provide a substantial number of fifty-five and older rental units. And so I'm not in favor of giving them the option to change that. I mean, I'm, I'm looking to get to fill a, a housing need that we have, fifty-five and older rental housing in the long term. Not until they can buy one additional lot somewhere in that neighborhood and add some things and then change, change the character of it. So, you know, I would really prefer that, that it would, it would, that we wouldn't take item J out and not hinge it being fifty-five and older solely upon until they can find additional parking. But say, you, you are asking for this, and so a condition of asking for this is that you are, as you have said, will have these units remain as fifty-five and older, older units. We're abandoning the greatest benefit to this that, that, that we can negotiate to get the additional units if, if we have this worded as it, as it is.
Mr. Bokey?
Okay, Ms. Brunel, help, help me with the math. So they can, given the site, and I haven't walked the site, in the zoning, you're saying that they could do forty-two units?
They have been permitted for forty-two units.
They've been permitted for forty-two units, and how many? If it's not a senior facility, how many parking spots are they providing?
Sixty-three.
Was it one and a half per apartment?
And that is our, the minimum required in the municipal code?
And that's the minimum. Under the density bonus. So now they come in with twenty, hey, we want to build twenty-one more. But there's the density bonus that allows them to do nine. So what you're saying is they could fit another twelve on this lot somehow, some way, and still do enough parking?
Correct, for, for senior housing, which only requires the
No, 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 I'm not talking about senior housing.
Okay.
I'm just talking about I want to build an apartment on that. I want to build an apartment building on that thing. How many units can I put on outside of senior housing, outside of saying I'm going to do low-income housing, outside of everything else? I just want to build apartments, market rate.
Fifty-four.
Fifty-four. And how many parking spots would I have to do? One and a half? Eighty-one is what I think we're looking for, if it's one and a half.
It is one and a half.
Okay. And then, and then open, and then a certain amount of open space and things like that?
Eighty, yes, it would be eighty-one parking stalls and then for the, the open space, they would be required to have a ten percent set aside generally, but we do allow for fees in lieu of that occasionally. As well as some other, there's, there's some flexibility for open space requirements in the code.
Okay. So what they're proposing here is we're going to do a low, extremely low income set aside. So we want that bonus density, which will allow us to get to sixty-three units, nine, six of which would be, because they get a one and a half, right?
Correct.
Okay. So then they say, hey, I want to do it as a senior facility. So not only am I getting okay, so let's step back. So now I'm saying to you, hey, I want the density bonus. Could I get the density bonus? If I was doing market rate for the whole thing, but I said, okay, I will set aside for extremely low income, give me sixty-three units. So now I'm, but now I somehow have to find under one point five ninety-four units or ninety-four and a half parking spots. Okay, would that be possible on that lot? You know that or not?
Not under the proposed configuration, no. I suppose that they could create some type of a parking structure or, or underground parking, but that's not what's being proposed as part of this development.
Okay, but instead they say we're going to make it a fifty-five and over facility. Which, and I'll ask you about the requirements here in a minute, but I make it, hey, I'm going to make it a fifty-five and over facility. So now my parking requirements drop to how much per unit?
In the station district, it's a three to one requirement. In the municipal code, we have an ability to look at a parking study as well as a traffic impact analysis in order to determine via the director the number of parking stalls required. And we established the recommendation that was provided as part of the analysis, which was a one-to-one ratio for this project.
So sixty-three parking spots?
Correct.
So I essentially save thirty-one and a half parking spots so they don't have, I get an, I get nine more units, but I there's, but I also don't have to build thirty-one and a half parking spots.
Correct.
Okay. So then what are the reporting requirements under the fifty-five thing? Because like, like anything, when we say low income, there has to be low, there has to be reporting, reporting requirements. So now not only are we worrying about those six units that are supposed to be extremely low income and they have to provide stuff, they really they have to provide us information on everybody living there, right?
We actually do not have reporting requirements for fifty-five and over communities. This use type is regulated by Fair Housing Standards. And so that is the definition that was incorporated into the covenant. The City of Lakewood has senior housing and fifty-five and over housing is how that is defined. But we do not have any additional reporting requirements.
Okay, and so then the so as, as things happen, and I think this is a concern of the council. Things happen, real estate's bought and sold all the time. So somewhere along the way, five, six, seven years from now, someone swoops in, buys an investor from wherever. They have their computer program, their computer program spits out. This property could be much more valuable if it was market rate. So they begin the conversion process, but the conversion process, as we're holding it now, would say they need to come up with thirty-something. Thirty-one and a half spaces. And it could be in how close a proximity? I mean, what would, what would pass the laugh test?
Well, earlier, we actually had a Comprehensive Plan Amendment that proposed changes to your existing parking standards. And we do not have a proximity requirement for off-site parking. There is some language that requires pedestrian access between off-site parking locations, but not like an adjacent lot necessarily.
Okay, okay, good, thank you. Any further questions of Ms. Brunel? And the one thing that is before us, as I understand it, is it does give up to sixty-three units of housing, some of which is low affordable, much of which is senior. And but for this application, we have no housing on that property at this point, right? Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt resolution 2022 dash zero nine? Yep, certainly.
So to your point, Mr. Mayor, the, the senior housing, we, are there requirements that that the rents be lower for senior housing or?
No. It's marker.
Age requirement, it's market rate. Correct.
Okay. Except for the six extremely low income.
Okay, and those are extremely low income, which is only thirty percent or less of the median income adjusted for household size.
Okay, I have a second question. Per Councilmember Branstadter's request to remove item J, was it? What, what would the impact of that be if we did that tonight? How would that work?
Well, you'd have to modify the motion or amend. Once we get a motion on the table to adopt resolution 2022 dash zero nine, there'd have to be an amendment to either strike or modify item J in the proposed resolution.
Thank you.
So currently I'm seeking, I don't know where we are, I'm seeking a motion to adopt resolution 2022 dash zero nine.
Yeah, I'm going to move adoption of resolution number 2022 dash zero nine.
A second for purposes of discussion before I offer an amendment. I have a question base for Ms. Brunel based on Mr. Bokey's line of inquiry.
Great, at least I've got a motion. My Mr. Bokey, seconded by Mr. Anderson on the table. Go ahead.
Ms. Brunel, so.
Oh, you got to move the mic.
Without additional parking. Do I understand it correctly that there's kind of an incremental increase in, in the number of allowable units from currently at forty-two? Low income would, with no additional parking, would move it to what? How many, and then if it's fifty-five and over?
They wouldn't be able to have any additional units if they continued to have it at market rate.
Okay, if they did, if they which is forty-two?
Forty-two is at market rate because we have a one and a half. Now, if they wanted to come in and make a portion of the units extremely low income, those units that they dedicated as extremely low income could be a one-to-one ratio, which is the same as the senior housing provisions. They might be able to, depending on the number of units that they wanted for that set aside, but there would be no housing. That would just be a parking reduction, not a density bonus. So the way that the density bonus works is you get to the max density in the zone for that piece of property, which in this case is fifty-four. And then the density bonus only applies to what's in excess of fifty-four. They can also use it as a parking reduction mechanism for any extremely low-income units, which would reduce it from one and a half to one parking stalls for those low-income units only.
Okay. So it's all, is it all or nothing then for the?
That's what the current proposal is, yes. So they currently have permitting for a forty-two unit development, two buildings, sixty-three units. They would be allowed outright in the zone if they were to find associated parking for fifty-four units. They are proposing a sixty-three unit development, nine additional units, all senior housing for now, as has been indicated, in order to have, meet those parking ratios in the municipal code because they are unable to find other parking stalls.
So we're adding twenty-one potential units?
Correct.
So what, what we're really doing is adding about one point three million dollars to the value of the land. Because currently, and that's an assessor's value, currently assessors are, in, in Lakewood are saying apartment property, the dirt's worth about sixty-five thousand dollars per unit based on how many units you can put on there. And so what's the, the developer is offering in exchange for that then is it, he says, I want to add those units, so I will give you so many low-income units. And we understood it to be also give you a, a senior facility, which would enhance our willingness to accept fewer parking stalls because presumably they have fewer cars. Is that fair?
Yes.
I would move to amend the motion to strike paragraph J and insert the words, as written, and insert the words provided that the complex shall be operated as a senior housing fifty-five and over facility pursuant to whatever the federal statute reference is and its successors. pursuant to whatever the federal statute reference is and its successors."
For, for, and I add, for twenty-five years.
Okay, so as I understand the proposed amendment, you would strike all of paragraph J with this additional language?
Okay.
For clarification, Councilmember Anderson, it is a twenty-year agreement.
Twenty? That's friendly.
So, I'll take that as... Yeah, I, I'm just trying to figure out how to articulate it because paragraph J of this resolution, or at least the covenant portion of the resolution. I'll have Mr. Anderson just read it again for the record because I'm not sure the clause that he read fits.
I'm having a hard time finding.
Yes, page one ninety-two. There it is.
I, okay, I'll strike that, it wasn't seconded anyways. Oh, I'll withdraw that proposed amendment and restate my proposed amendment.
Okay.
Substitute the language in paragraph, sub-paragraph J to read applicant shall market and operate the property as a fifty-five and over community as defined in section eight oh seven B, C of the Fair Housing Act as, as may and its successors and will maintain the policy for the twenty-year period of this agreement.
Period. Is there a second to that amendment? It's been moved by Councilmember Anderson and seconded by Councilmember Bokey that we modify, Branstadter, that we modify Resolution twenty-two dash zero-nine in item J of the proposed housing incentives covenant as read by Mr. Anderson into the record. Other questions, Mr. Bokey?
Yeah, I have, I have a question for Councilmember Anderson. So then the, and I get what you're doing, so then I'm going to ask about the last half. Are you striking the last half if applicant is able to meet such parking requirements?
Right, that is, the amendment does not include that language.
So you're striking that?
Yes.
Okay, is that wise?
Pardon?
Is that wise? Isn't that our language that protects us or are you, or?
The council may always amend the agreement by agreement.
So?
So that doesn't need to be included.
So, so you're saying since it's already in law, that's self-evident anyway. They would have to go get, get the parking requirement anyway.
No, I'm not, I'm not talking about the parking requirement triggering anything. My amendment is simply it must be operated as a fifty-five and over community for the period of the agreement.
Oh, period.
Now, as just a matter of contract law, this or future council could amend that by agreement if a proposal came up that deemed acceptable, but would leave it, it would leave it discretionary for this or a future council to change it rather than imposing a reasonableness requirement.
Any further questions? Mr. Branstadter?
I'm in favor of the amendment because I think it has the spirit of us being attentive to the entire spectrum of housing needs within the community. And twenty years from now, there may or may not be the same. I mean, we, we address parking requirements every couple of years in the comp plan. So what the parking requirements are going to be to convert away from a fifty-five and older to something else in twenty years, don't have that crystal ball. But I think the community benefits from having the commitment of twenty years there. I mean, this is, this is a development that's in a great place for fifty-five and older development. It's in walking distance of a business district that is actually going to grow as we, as, as we, as we do some more work down there. That, you know, fifty, all fifty-five and older people are not low income folks, but, but we have a lot of people who are, have got, gotten means, but they really like to move to someplace fifty-five and older, but they haven't, but, but, but they're, they say, well, I guess I'll go someplace else because I can't find a place in Lakewood. So, so we're, we're giving, this is, this is a win-win. We're giving the developer what he wants, his additional units. But we'll get something that the community wants too, which is a new update of fifty-five and older, maybe on a little bit higher scale than some of the existing fifty-five and older in the community. So I'm, I'm going to vote in favor of the amendment.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. So the motion or the amendment to the motion carries. We now go to the motion as amended, which is Resolution twenty-two dash zero-nine with the amendment and the covenant marked item J. Any further discussion on the motion to adopt the resolution as amended? If not, all supportive signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Resolution twenty-two dash zero-nine as amended has been adopted. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We now turn to unfinished business. Do we have any, Mr. Caulfield?
There is none, Mayor.
Looks like no new business as well, so we turn to reports by the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Deputy Mayor and councilmembers. Four updates. The first is last week we were contacted by Pierce Transit, by their CEO. They're moving forward, I think as you're aware, last week they were here providing a presentation to you all. They're moving forward with their second BRT, Bus Rapid Transit, which, by the way, they don't expect to be operational until twenty thirty or so, which is about eight years, eight years from now. So what they're asking for is they're asking for Lakewood's support as they move forward with next steps on this. And their, their board is expected to take action sometime in September. And what we've done is we've drafted, we've drafted a letter stating the city of Lakewood's support, coupled with our policy position on where we would like the BRT to serve. So before you this evening is a draft of that letter and we wanted to provide you with an opportunity to provide any feedback or input or anything that we're missing there. The punchline of the, of, of the city's letter is that we support their corridor B option with the caveat that we would like to see BRT to extend down into our, more of our underserved areas, including the Springbrook neighborhood as with Tillicum, Woodbrook, and of course JBLM as, as, as well. So that's the, that's, that's the crux of the letter as presented. It includes some additional background and data information that we have used in the past with both Pierce Transit as well as Sound Transit. So this language might look familiar when Sound Transit Three was being proposed. So with that, Mayor, if you have any feedback or input you'd like to provide us, we would certainly appreciate that or if we're missing anything.
Well, based on the conversation we had last week with members of Pierce Transit when they spoke to us about the corridor options, I recall council having at least some consensus in that they wanted whatever corridor option in B that was ultimately chosen to both stop at the Sounder Transit Station and the Lakewood Town Center, not just one or the other. There was some conversation about the lack of the corridor options extending to either Springbrook or Tillicum or JBLM. And their answer to us was, as I recall, that the study and the numbers didn't justify the extension. So my question to us here, are we going to hold tight to that policy item that we've discussed to tell Pierce Transit we want their options to extend to Springbrook, Woodbrook and JBLM? Mr. Branstadter?
Based on their presentation a week ago, you know, I understand that they're not going to be able to get to running a BRT line to Tillicum, JBLM and even into the core of Springbrook. But I would like our letter to say that all of their proposed B routes didn't go as far as the Sounder Station. And that I would like to encourage them in our letter that a B route that includes a stop at the Sounder Station en route to the town center is much preferred. And that it is aligns with Sound Transit's plans to make improvements in the Kendrick neighborhood and on, on one side of Pacific Highway and, and, and Springbrook on the other to facilitate the ease of residents getting to the Sounder Station going along that way. So, you know, they, they could do that by running up to the Sounder Station and then continuing on up to Bridgeport and then turning to the town center or how they, how they want to do that, they, they could figure that out. But I, I guess I don't want to repeat what they have already rejected of saying get to Tillicum, get to JBLM, being able to go and do that. But the additional four blocks to get to the Sounder Station when we're going to be making investments in conjunction with Sound Transit to make the Sounder Station more accessible to folks both in Springbrook and in the Lakewood Station Subarea District Kendrick Neighborhood, where they're planning on, on doing that. And those developments are supposed to occur before they envision the BRT being made. So I'd like our letter to at least include asking for serious consideration of getting it to, to the Sounder Station en route to the town center.
Mr. Anderson?
Having spent close to ten years on the Pierce Transit Board advocating for BRT Two to come down this route, it's, to me is a little bit disturbing that there are so many other options. It's like they're trying to play, it's, it's, it's a little bit disturbing to me that there are so many other options being proposed, although this seems to grade better if you look at the objective numbers. I would go so far as to say we would, we recognize the need to serve underserved areas to provide a north-south spine with, with Sound Transit didn't do. And the need to extend further south when feasible to reach our underserved areas in JBLM. And that the, the project should not only select B, but should be designed in such a way to facilitate future extension, which is exactly what Sound Transit didn't do. You know, they dead-ended at Tacoma Dome and took a right when everybody had anticipated that that someday would go as far as Olympia. So I, I see that loop coming into Lakewood and it reminds me of the Sound Transit line coming to the Tacoma Dome and hanging right and never getting where it should go. So I, I think we could advocate for that as much as that without appearing to be argumentative.
So extension south as feasible as opposed to our way or the highway, so to speak, on that?
Designed, we request it be designed, not only that they pick that, but they could be designed in a way that extension.
Could be feasible.
Facilitated when feasible.
Any other thoughts or comments? And those over here listening to the hour-long BRT conversation? Does that help, Mr. Caulfield, give some further direction? Well, I'll take a look at the letter again.
It does, it does, Mayor, and I'm also hearing too a letter that's a little bit more succinct than what we have here this evening. So what, what I've heard is supporting corridor B plan, though with the caveat to fully access both the Lakewood Transit Center and the town center as well as the Sounder, which would mean actually looping around, not coming through one oh eighth, but rather up Bridgeport. That would probably be the most, because I don't have, I don't see them doing a turnaround at the Sounder Station. And then to build upon Councilmember Anderson's language, which is not to do with the city manager's recommending, which is to be argumentative. I just, I, I'll just be frank with you, I, I, I believe in twenty years there will be a need for BRT down into those areas. Actually, I believe there's a need for it now, but it's here and there. So I will, I will stop being argumentative. But to include language in there to build or accommodate for the feasibility or the flexibility of, of, of future extension down into that area and we can, and we can do that.
Yeah, after sitting through the massive cost overruns for BRT One, yeah, unbelievable.
So one of my concerns is that, that there's massive internal resistance at Pierce Transit to serving JBLM. There's a massive internal resistance to serving JBLM. And a lot of that comes from Tacoma Board or commission members. And it's the fact that it's outside of the transit zone now and it doesn't produce any tax. So the fact that it is functionally the, probably the second largest city, hate to say that, in, in Pierce County, doesn't carry weight because it doesn't produce tax revenue and it's outside their, the zone where they have voters. So they, they dismiss it.
It certainly doesn't mean that they can't plan in the future for good bus service to reach those transit stops so they can get on the BRT, you know, from either JBLM, Tillicum or Springbrook. And they do that sort of scheduling work all the time. So I believe you got some good direction and we'll do a redraft.
Just three other quick items. This Thursday morning at eleven AM and Deputy Mayor Mary Moss will be representing this body. The National Auto Body Council in partnership with USSA, USAA, the United States Automobile Association, is going to be presenting five JBLM families with vehicles and it's going to happen right out here. It's in partnership with SSMCP as well. They have asked for a proclamation and I believe, Mayor, the city clerk has provided you a proclamation there. And if the council's so inclined, our recommendation would be for the deputy mayor to read and provide that proclamation as, as well. So unless there's any objection from, from the body, I'd just like to point that out. This Saturday, Summer Fest and kicks off at eleven, eleven AM. And I know there's opening ceremonies on, on the main stage. So with the council, I think the mayor, you'll be saying a few words to kick the event off. It'll be an all-day event going till, actually ending with a drone light show and a balloon glow about nine, between nine and ten, ten, ten PM. But there'll be a, a number of international performers, forty car, forty food trucks, forty food trucks this year. Car show, extreme trampoline. Museum of Glass is going to have their hot shot there. So a number of music and bands are going to be performing. So a great event and we probably expect, it'll probably be forty, fifty thousand people we expect to, to show up for the event. So it'll be busy around Forest Tillicum Park on, on Saturday. And then the last, you know, national night out is quickly approaching. And then the last, you know, National Night Out is quickly approaching. It's the second Tuesday in August, and already we have 16 events or, you know, events our neighbors have volunteered to host National Night Out events, and we'll get that on your calendar. And I would just ask if you're interested in riding again with one of our police officers, let us know, and we will get that scheduled for you. And then we do have a the 16 folks who have signed up so far will share that with you, and as that gets updated, we'll share that with you as well. Tuesday, August 2nd. So that's what we have going on.
It's plenty. It's going to be a busy week. Very good. Well, that's, Deputy Mayor has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Caulfield, do you know if they are going to have buses transport people in from the college and other areas?
I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor.
Do you know if they have buses that's going to be transporting people in from the college and other areas?
I don't know offhand, Deputy Mayor, but I'll find out.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Caulfield? If not, we'll turn to Council comments. Mr. Boecking, start with you.
I do have a few comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week, I went to the Thursday night Lake City Community Association. You know, well-attended, always well-done, I think. And they talked a little bit about well, one question did come up about the park, and that got answered. And I think we got that, that hopefully we've got that information back to Larry Woods so he can send it out to his people. And it was had to do with that new parking lot because the people said, well, it's locked all the time. And I drove by there, and of course, it wasn't. But they, but that was that one Saturday. And so we, I think we got that answered and hopefully have sent that to them as to why it was locked. There was a good reason why the park department had it. There were a few other things that happened on that. So this week, PCRC meeting, Thursday. Planning Commission and the PCRC meetings, I have to tell you, there are no there's one action item. There are really no major action items anyway. And, but there are like five or six different things. So I will suffer through it. And I think suffer is the right word, although there are some good things. They are going to talk about Housing Bill 1220, housing affordability. Then they're going to go into flood control, comprehensive plan update schedule. Tiffany is doing that. And then PCRC Committee Report. So right after, so these meetings have become a bit longer. The chair this year is very interested in kind of lengthening out the agenda. That's his goal. So I'll leave it at that. Planning Commission is also this Wednesday. Planning Commission is now meeting almost weekly, and I think they're dealing with our climate change thing. I looked at it earlier today. So in forwarding that to us, I think that's what they're going to be working on. So and I don't know what's tomorrow. Oh, the farmer's market and the concert. Hopefully, it'll be warmer. It was great, great last week. Okay.
Thanks, Councilmember Branstad.
Over the past couple of weeks, I've attended a sequence of Finance Committee meetings for South Sound 911. And it looks like the Finance Committee and the staff there have gone forward to investing some surplus dollars as a result of some bonds being retired so that the communications allocations for fire and police agencies around the county will not see an increase this year, but we're going to be able to fund them at at the 2022 levels. And rather than just putting extra money in the bank, we'll be able to go and do that, which will have a small, small positive impact on our our allocation, our bill to South Sound 911 in 2023. I think that the other thing is, is that, you know, we had some discussions and some email things about graffiti that's been occurring in Fort Silicon Park, being able to go and do that. Quite a few people have commented upon that to me or in social media to do that. I think we're in a week of where we really need to pay some special effort to us so that 40,000 people see the park at its best, not as it's been abused. And to the extent that we perhaps need to add some resources this coming week to make sure of that, we should probably do that.
Agreed. Councilmember Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Saturday, I attended an open house for, from a company that builds detached accessory dwelling units, and it was a wonderful home in the back of a pretty compact area in North Tacoma. And the owner of the house, the ADU is using it as an Airbnb. But there's potential there for these accessory dwelling units as low-income housing if partnering with the faith community or nonprofits. There's the opportunity, such as the presentation that we heard tonight, for churches or other organizations to build these on their parking lots. Very economical floor plans all done. I was very intrigued, and I have asked for more information regarding low-income housing, and I will forward that along when I get it. Thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have anything to report except that I'm very excited to go to Summerfest this weekend.
Great, thanks. Councilmember Anderson, and then?
Waited for years to go to Summerfest. I'm going to be out of town. So please tell me how wonderful it is when I get back.
Yeah. Deputy Mayor Moss? Really? Okay. Well, I've got about 30 minutes worth. Let's see here. Yeah, exactly. Yeah, exactly. Just a few quick comments. I was at the farmer's market and the concert last Tuesday, and it was the first time I was able to get to market. I just wanted to say it was fantastic. It was so well laid out, the setup where it is currently is really, really good. I talked to just about every vendor, all very positive, all making money, really pleased to be here in Lakewood. So that was a good sign, and the concert was fun. Met with the new government affairs manager for the Port of Tacoma. He just had a meet and greet, wanted to know if we had any suggestions, comments, how we could perhaps partner more, give the port some more feedback on all things Lakewood. And I told him I'd get back to him on that. On Friday, I met with Ms. Dodsworth and some members of a company that is in competition to obtain the contract for the reconstruction construction of Western State Hospital. They have an ethos with their company that they invest back into the community in which they work. So they were very excited about the opportunity. If they get the contract, that they would love to be able to partner with us on a significant project like the H Barn. So they're very excited about it. More to follow, but it was just, you know, it was very positive, positive tour by people who can do something. Summerfest, I'll see some of you out there on Saturday. We'll open it up at 11:00, 11:30. And I want to remind you, I sent an email about Lakewood Gardens' big summer festival itself the following Sunday, the 24th. If you didn't get an email, I'd be happy to send you a link there. They would love to have you come and join, join them with their lovely event with music and all sorts of opportunities in the park to raise funds to keep them operational. So that would be a good thing. And then Coffee House of the Mayor, the next one's going to be Thursday, July 28. It's all about transportation, the past, present, and future, what we've done, what we are doing, and what we hope to accomplish with those other projects that are on the docket. And it will include a conversation in the non-motorized transportation plan and get the public hopefully engaged to learn more about when we can, yeah, active transportation, active, all sorts of stuff. But anyway, more to follow on that. Just want to put it on your calendar, July 28, Thursday, likely at the Pavilion again. And with that, we will now recess into executive session for about 20 minutes initially pursuant to RCW 4231101G to review the performance of a public employee. The city council is not expected to take action following the executive session. So we will be in recess. So we will be in recess.